Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape Cod Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape Cod Islands home.
Carlson Printing, 508-548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@gmail.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to call to order the Town of Falmouth Select Board Regular Meeting for Monday, November 3, 2025. It is now 6:30 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance Institute of Fire in the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, please silence your cellphones and notify the Chair if you are making a video or order your recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. Okay, we're going to move to recognition, and I have two. I just want to congratulate Jack Aferian and the Cape Cod Marathon. They were voted the best marathon in Massachusetts recently by Race Raves Magazine. And it was a wonderful event this year, and most everyone was pretty happy with the event. And the other is Hannah Van der Schussen, Van der Schuren, our Chair of our Falmouth Task Force for Workforce and Families, was at the Housing to Protect Cape Cod Summit hosted by the Housing Assistance Corp., and she received a Housing Champion Award this year. So congratulations to Hannah for all the good work she does on the Affordable Housing and Workforce Committee. Anyone else?
I have one after.
I was going to say, I'd like to recognize the Falmouth Police Department and all of the nonprofits that they worked with over the weekend for their efforts to collect donations for Falmouth Service Center. It was going really well when I saw them at about noon on Saturday, and it's an effort that's more needed than ever, so.
I saw that, and I think they got like 4,000 pounds of food donated and like $1,300 in cash.
Yeah, which is remarkable.
That was pretty good, just for one couple hours on a Saturday.
I think everybody's feeling the need for it with what's going on.
Yeah, and I'd like to...
Doug, you go.
Go ahead. I'd like to recognize the Water Quality Management Committee and the wastewater staff for the securing of $450,000 grant to install two PRBs over at Snug Harbor. It's the leftover plume from the wastewater treatment plant, and they've been diligently searching for ways to remedy the problems that have been created over there. And this PRB will intercept what seems to be a significant plume, and they're going to use emulsified vegetable oil in one section, and they're going to use wood chips and bark mulch or whatever the natural organic material is in the other section. So those seem to work pretty well. They did one on Shorewood Drive a few years ago, and it's still producing good results, so I'm hopeful that that'll be helping over there.
And I just want to recognize the Flying Bridge for their fundraising efforts for disaster relief for Hurricane Melissa and how it affected the island of Jamaica. Hundreds of thousands of Jamaicans are what, you know, make our economy work in the summer times, and without them, we wouldn't be able to exist as a region. So, you know, thank you to the Flying Bridge for their efforts, and you know, we'll continue to support Jamaica whenever they need.
Speaking of the Flying Bridge, they'll be hosting a Veterans Day breakfast, as they do every year, for the veterans. And that leads me to announce that we will be having a Veterans Day Ceremony, as we do every year, on next Tuesday, November 11. The Select Board will be meeting at the Village Green and starting a walkover around 10:45. So, anyone else for announcements?
Sure. This Friday, Falmouth Public Schools' art show opens at the Art Center, which is always a really fantastic chance to see what both the young and, I guess, adult artists in our community are up to. And then on Monday evening, the FALCAN, Falmouth Climate Action Network, is going to be hosting a workshop on what's called N Roads. It's basically an opportunity to play with a platform that lets you make decisions and see what the ramifications of those decisions are, and you can find information about that. You do have to register for that one. You can find information about that on the FALCAN Facebook page.
Thanks. Send that software up to Washington, and that'd be helpful. Okay, public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in discussion of the topic. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to public comment? Mr. Murphy?
Hi, Kerry Murphy. Can I approach the bench? I'm a representative of Friends of Cape Cod Country Club, and that was a letter that's going to be sent out to all town meeting members. I am not going to be at a town meeting, so it's probably my last chance to get in front of the decision-makers of this town. You are the change-makers. You facilitate success. There's a lot of people in this town that are very concerned about what's happening at Cape Cod Country Club. They're confused. They don't know what Article 12 and 13 are about. You may be confused yourself. I sat on this board for nine years. I'm looking at those articles, and I'm wondering what is happening. I know there's a reluctant owner of that property who we have not had a substantial conversation with, which would be good to have, a one-on-one situation. And I'd like you to support Article 14, to remove those solar overlay district designation. I know it's difficult to do that, but I think you should have a conversation about that. I'd like to see your Article 12 and 13 to really think hard about what you're doing to that level of the community. We are the third most urbanized state in the nation, Massachusetts. Falmouth doesn't have a lot of impact parcels left. This is one of them. A golf course sits on it. It's a water recharge area for Coonamessett Pond and the Coonamessett Well. It's that important a parcel. People's property taxes are, I mean, people's property values are going to plummet because of this. No one is going to want to sell a house or buy, are going to have a difficulty selling a house or buying a house in that environment. So I would just ask, we're not anti-solar. Solar is a big part of the mix. We're not anti-climate change. We know climate change is happening. We have the most coastline of any town. We understand all of that. We understand it. There are plenty of places to cite solar in this community. You know, East Falmouth has taken it a lot on. The dump, the fairgrounds, you know, different places, and here we are with the lower, we're going to have the largest solar ground-mounted array in Massachusetts and possibly New England, in Hatchville, Massachusetts. It's an agriculturally zoned place that has enjoyed wildlife and every other benefit to this town, including the vistas. I would ask you, as change-makers and decision-makers, to think long and hard how this process plays out. I would like you to support Article 14, whether it goes, it's not going to probably smell, it's passed the legal smell test, but probably year or two articles are not going to either. So this is your time. This is your moment. You're here to facilitate success for this community and to the taxpayers that voted you in. I don't mean to make this a lecture, because I know you take your job very, very seriously, and I applaud what you're doing, but in this case, this is an impact parcel that, once it's gone, it's not going to come back. It's not going to come back. In 40 years, we're going to have a destroyed industrial sandpit. A thousand trees will never grow there again. You can have a sledding hill, you know, you can have the power to low-income companies from, to low-income residents in this town. You already have that. A 30-year electric bill right now, part of that, third of that electric bill goes to low-income people in the state of Massachusetts. That's a fact. We enjoy, we have the highest, some of the highest electrical costs. There are plenty of places in this community to cite solar. On Thomaslander Road, how about the power line easements and crisscrosses? Can we put them there? Okay, I'm just wrapping up.
You have over your 10 minutes.
But I think to have a conversation with the community and plan this properly, I think it's incumbent upon this board to do it, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your service, past and current, Mr. Murphy, to the town here. Appreciate it.
Good luck at a town meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. Licenses. Consider a vote to approve an application by Cape Cod Winery for a special one-day agricultural liquor license to be executed at Mahoney's Garden Center, 958 East Falmouth Highway for an agricultural event, quote, Mary and Bright, on November 13, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Number two, consider a vote to approve the application by Falmouth Theater Guild for two special one-day all-alcoholic beverages licenses to be located at Highfield Theater, 58 Highfield Drive, Falmouth, on the weekends of December 12 through 14, and 19 through 21st. Number three, consider a vote to approve a request to change the date of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license issued to West Falmouth Library, 575 West Falmouth Highway, for a fall wine tasting dated October 29, 2025, to November 12, 2025, due to illness of the presenter. Administrative orders. Consider a vote to approve a request for the Falmouth Cultural Council to apply to the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod, AFCC, for a grant in the amount of $5,000, and to the Rotary Club of Falmouth, Cape Cod, for a grant in the amount of $1,000. And number two, consider a vote to approve the request by Highfield Hall and Gardens for a signed variance to place a holiday sign at the corner of Depot Avenue and North Main Street for annual holidays at Highfield to be displayed from date of approval through December 15, 2025. That concludes the consent agenda. Your motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've moved to consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
One question of Town Manager's Office. Since we're still approving one-day wine and liquor licenses for Highfield Hall and the West Falmouth Library, I thought I would just ask about the status of the cultural institution licenses that we recently...
Great question. I asked the same question to staff in the front office. We're still working on some details, so it's not quite ready for primetime yet, but we're, again, we're close.
Okay. We don't have a date when that goes into effect?
I don't have a date yet.
Okay.
Is there a plan to go out to all of the vendors and providers to let them know of the new procedure?
So the number is relatively small. I was told by Phyllis in her front office, but she's got a good handle on it, so she'll communicate with those businesses that she deals with, those entities, I should say, that she deals with.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're going to hear a report from the Board of Library Trustees. You have 15 minutes.
I'm doing a duet this evening. So I'm going to be talking about what the trustees have been up to, and then Brian Stokes, the Director of the Library, is going to fill you in on what the library itself has been up to and talk about the East Falmouth Library Project. I'm Judy Fenwick. I'm currently the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. When I stepped off the school committee after 16 years, I took a year off before I re-upped to become a member of the Library Board of Trustees, and I, somebody asked me why the change, and I said, because there's a whole lot less drama at the library. However, I think there is some drama at the library, and Brian may talk about this a little bit, and that's in the teen room. Of a theatrical nature. Anyway, I always start off my print report that's due once a year with something literary or something tied to what libraries are. And so I have a couple of quotes this year that I just like to start this off because I think we often just take the word "library" for granted. So Carl Sagan, when asked, what was his passion, he said that it was ignited when he was a child by getting his first library card. And his quote, "We are the only species on the planet to have invented a communal memory stored neither in our genes nor in our brains. The warehouse of that memory is called the library." So we have one of those here in town. So I know that several of you are fairly new to the board, so I'm going to give a little bit of the usual drill when I come talk. First is the governance of the three town libraries, Maine, East Falmouth, and North Falmouth, are the responsibility of a seven-member elected Board of Library Trustees. Our governance is embedded in Mass General Laws, in Falmouth's whole rule charter, and in the Board's bylaws. We also have a strategic plan that helps us operate, and our current strategic plan is 2022 to 2027, which means next year, we'll be starting to work on the next five-year plan. As part of that strategic plan, which we file with the state, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, we have an annual action plan that the library director prepares to flesh out our actions and activities each year. The trustees meet in open session once a month with periodic open meetings of the resource, Building and Grounds Committee, and Policy Committee. We have seven current trustees, as I've said. Jennifer Elly is the Vice Chair, is serving her third term. Mary Fran Buckley, her second term. Myself as Chair, my third term. Judith Handley, the Treasurer, who's serving her first term. Donna Madison Earls, if any of you remember her, is a fourth-grade teacher at Mullen Hall, is serving her first term. Kathy Mount is in her third term, and Camille Romano is our Secretary, and she's in her first term. I know that part of the annual report is supposed to talk about attendance at committee meetings, and I don't know if anybody ever reports them, but I just want to say that thanks to the Zoom option, we have almost 100% attendance, except for one member who occasionally travels internationally where time zones do not permit her to attend our meetings. So that's our basics on what we do. The trustees have custody and care of three buildings, Maine, North Falmouth out on Chester Street, and East Falmouth out on 310 T-Ticket Highway. And the Maine branch has an asset that a lot of people like to make use of, and that's our library lawn. And every year, the trustees are asked to entertain the idea of opportunities for people to use the lawn, and every year, we usually grant requests to use the lawn. Some of our favorites are the Summer Movies Under the Stars that the Falmouth Business Association has been putting on. Arts Alive has a multi-day event, a series of events there. College Light Opera does an annual summer concert. This year, the Falmouth Historical Society, in collaboration with the Falmouth 250 Committee, did a Revolutionary Lanterns and Lyrecks program that involved families. The Austin Healey Club of New England, I don't know how many Austin Healeys are still left in New England, the Falmouth Village Association's Holiday Stroll, the Shining Sea Strummers, and out in North Falmouth every year, the Unplugged Paul White Memorial Race. So this does not include the premiere event, which is the five-day Falmouth Friends of Public Libraries' annual summer book sale. And as we often say, we've been told by people who come to the library book sale from out of town that they plan their vacations around it. So this year, I'll talk about the Friends a little bit later. As a result of our monthly meetings, a lot of our activities are based around our budget and the things that we are supporting. So we have been supporting, and these are activities that are not funded by the town operating budget, but the trustee fund, and I'll give a little history on that in a bit. So this year, we supported the following activities, and I know Brian will also give some information on these. Adult programs, we had 302 programs with about 4200 attendees. The young adult programs, which has absolutely, I don't like to use the word exploded, but it has, 134 programs this year with 2,120 attendees. And that's a group that we're not used to having in the library in the numbers that we now are. We've been putting money towards professional development for the staff. We've, I think, tripled our money for staff development over the last three years. This year, or the reporting year, we sent staff, three staff, to the American Library Association in Philadelphia, one staff member to the New England Science Boot Camp for librarians at Bowden College, and two staff to the Massachusetts Library Association Conference. We also support the staff in appreciating them quite often. We also purchased 12 public access desktop computers for Maine and two for East. And the, this is something we used to lease. The trustees have supported public access computers since we started having them in the library. So this is not a cost in the department budget, but that the trustees support. The East Falmouth Library Project, I know I'm going to leave that for Brian solely. One thing I'd like to point out is that the Falmouth Public Library staff is the heartbeat of our institution. And as of the writing of the report, when I put this in, I just wrote very quickly that they had another busy summer, but indeed it was. But one important thing that's happened this past year is that Brian has pulled the staff into collaborating with the policy subcommittee. So we're, as we review our policies, the staff is providing input. And especially into a section, we have formal policies, but then attached to those policies, we have exhibits, which are, in effect, the do's and don'ts, or the rules and regulations for implementing the policy. And that's where the staff has heavily had input. We have two groups that support the library, the Friends of the Falmouth Public Library, under the leadership this year of Mary Tomucci, and this is, again, the group that is responsible for putting on the book sale. This summer, there were 50,000 books that were for sale, and we grossed, we, I involve myself with this group because I like their power, grossed about $80,000. The things that the Friends support are museum passes, children's and branch programming, digital and special collections, and the joy of learning classes. And we have two trustees who are liaisons to the Friends group. Then there's the Falmouth Public Library Support Fund that's been in existence since, I think, 2014, and it's a group that was started as a 501(c)(3) by several trustees in order to accommodate about $650,000 that the trustees were hoping to recoup from the former Falmouth Public Library Fund after the renovation of Maine closed. So the group is headed now by Elizabeth Abrams, a former library trustee. I was elected to a new position of Vice President. Leonard Johnson stepped down after a decade as Treasurer, and Bob Ripley rejoined the fund and has been elected Treasurer for the coming year. And trustee Camille Romano serves as a clerk. I think that, one of the things I just want to focus on, about 5:30, I sent Peter Johnson Staub and the Finance Director Laura Sutron a copy of the trustee's budget, well, that's the first time I've ever sent you the budget for 2026, but I sent a copy of the town financial report from the trustees, and I just wanted to weigh in on a couple of things that have morphed from the time period reporting through June 2025. That is that, in the course of this year that I'm reporting on, we had doubled programming for adults and young adults from previous years because we see more activity and we see the potential for pulling more people into the library through the programming. We also doubled staff development, and this is not only going to conferences, but providing continuing education, and we have staff recruitment in case we need it. We have fairly low amounts budgeted in our capital section because the, most of the designated funds that we have in our trustee fund, which as of June 30, 2025, was running $1.5 million, and the history on that is something that I wanted to share with you. How am I doing?
I wasn't.
Okay.
I think you're fast approaching 15 minutes.
I want to give him, I want to give him all the time he needs, but I just wanted to let folks know the history of the fund that we often refer to, because it's what makes our wheels as trustees go around. It was established in the 1890s by Mrs. James Beebe to buy books, and in 1897, there was $332 in that account. In 1986, the town treasurer reported the fund had grown to $23,400. In 2002, then-library trustee Frank Duffy submitted an application to the IRS for the trustees of the Falmouth Public Library to have their own employer identification number. So we have that fund now operating as an account that the trustees oversee. And in 2006, the Board of Trustees indicated that the Beebe Fund, which would have originally been used for purchasing books, was now applied to the general betterment of the library. And if you fast forward to 2025, the trustees look forward to putting a sizable portion of that current trustee fund into action when the East Falmouth Library needs to be outfitted as a 21st century public library. I yield the rest of the time to Director Brian Stokes.
Thank you, Judy. Brian Stokes, Library Director. I'll be very quick. I just wanted to say, I've already spoken...
Take your time. We want to hear about what's going.
Yeah, I've been here recently to speak with you about the East Falmouth Library Project. I will be back to speak with you about that again in the very near future. I think tonight, I just simply like to focus on a few key numbers, and that is, for fiscal year 2025, the library, across its three locations, saw a 10% increase in visits. For the first time ever, we had over 200,000 people come in through the doors of our three locations, which is pretty remarkable, because we're not that big of a town, but people really use our spaces, and these are really vital spaces for our community.
Do you attribute that to anything in particular, Brian?
I mean, I think...
Other than being, you know, the good director that you are.
I think, I think we have inclusive and welcoming spaces, and we've really tried over the last couple of years to make sure that we're offering something for everyone in this community. But I think, more than ever, these are spaces that are not necessarily thought of as book repositories, as maybe libraries were historically sort of regarded as. These are truly community centers. It's a place where you can come and just be inside for a while. It's a place you can come be around other people for a while. It's a place you can pursue academic work. You can find something entertaining. You can just have a safe place for your kids to play for a little while while you take a little bit of a break from, you know, full-time parenting. There's a million reasons why people come into our spaces, right? I couldn't tell you all of them, but I think that shows that in 2025, when, you know, there are some people in this country and many communities in this country that are choosing not to support these institutions, here, it's more vital than it's ever been. And I think that's a really important thing for us to consider and remember as we move forward, and certainly something I think about every day. Our collections continue to be used more and more. We saw a 5% increase in collection usage with over 500,000 checkouts last year of materials, both digital and physical. That was led by children's materials and downloadable audio. So I like to think of that as sort of the future and the past and the present, all sort of rolled into one. Libraries and parents and children have always been connected. It's a place where we really teach children how to love reading and learning. But also, I think, our downloadable audio success is reflective of the fact that we're embracing how people use our materials now and will in the future, as we pivot away from physical audio CDs, books on CD, and embrace providing this to folks wherever they are and however they want to get it. Finally, programming. We saw 70% increase in the programs offered by the library last year to the community, which is great. We had some really nice stability at our sort of programming librarian level, which allowed us to really be creative and deliver on those programs, I think, that folks are looking for, and maybe things that they didn't even know that they were looking for. And we also saw about a 68% increase in attendance of those programs as well. So more programs and more people attending programs. And those programs, again, try to appeal to everyone. We have great programs for kids, older adults. We have programs online. We have programs that are passive programs, where you can come in and do a scavenger hunt around our space. We had a very successful Comic-Con-style program in the summer. It was our second one. We call it Cape Con. That's very appealing to young adults, but also families as well, and is a really inclusive thing. So I know that we're sort of at time. I'm happy to answer any questions about what we do. that we're sort of at time. I'm happy to answer any questions about what we do.
As you know, I do some work over at the county jail as well.
Yes, yes, sir.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what you do over at the county jail?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Over there?
A few years ago, we started doing some work at the jail. The jail had not had a librarian since the onset of COVID in March 2020. In 2022, we reached out to Sheriff Buckley's office. And in 2023, we were able to actually start cleaning up the library out there, which had not been touched for a few years. Over the course of time, we started providing some library services in the library out there once a week, alternating weeks between seeing some men who are incarcerated out there and then some women the next week. We started doing some programming out there shortly after that. I offered a sort of modified version of a class that I designed when I was doing some correctional work earlier in my career, post-9/11 American literature. So we offered that to a group of men and a group of women after that because their programming is sort of segregated. Last year was a big success. We actually now offer weekly library service to everybody, every single unit in the facility, every week. So on Mondays and Fridays, myself and a few of the staff members go out there. And not, most of the people actually at the facility don't get to go to the library out there. So we load up a book cart and push it to each unit that's curated by us to, you know, hopefully have some interesting titles and aspirational titles perhaps. And we also fill requests as well. We bring that to each unit, even the, you know, administrative segregation units or the solitary units and the protective custody units that certainly don't get these kinds of services very often. So, you know, our perspective is that these are folks who are part of our community. They're going to be coming back into our community and having a good relationship with the library and knowing that there's a stable sort of place that you can come to and get information and that, you know, can, wants to help you sort of have something positive in your life, even during perhaps the darkest period of your life. I think that's a really important thing, and we're really happy to be able to do that.
That's great.
Who else? Mr. Reed?
Yeah, just two quick ones. We're heading into our strategic planning session. Judy mentioned that there's a five-year strategic plan and an annual action plan.
Yeah.
What do you need the Select Board's eyes on as we enter our strategic plan?
I think, you know, just understanding that, you know, the changing role of the library in our community, I think, is a really important thing for everybody to understand. You know, in my career, I've had so many people say, like, I didn't even know libraries were important anymore, or why, I haven't been to a library in a decade. And that there are some folks who have that experience, that are in that position. But there are so many people who rely on the library for so many vital things. And sort of understanding the 360 sort of provision of services that we offer, rather than seeing us as, as sort of one-note books, you know? It's so important, and I'm always happy to talk about it, just to understand that we provide so much, so much, so many things. And the staff of our library are so smart and resilient and resourceful in providing those things. You know, most of these people got into library work because they love reading, right? And now we're doing so much more than that. So I would just say, keep that in mind as you sort of think about our role in the community, and that we are willing to and ready to step up and be what the community needs, I think.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you very much. It's a question that I'm gonna, now, I think Vice Chair Goldstone asked this last week, but every department head who comes in. Do you know what percentage of your staff lives in town or on the Cape?
I don't know. I know where everybody lives. I'm a librarian, not a math major, so I can't do that percentage for you on the spot, probably.
Yeah.
But I think that most of our staff are local to Falmouth. A few are over the bridge in either Buzzards Bay or Wareham. We have had staff in the past who are farther afield. And in my personal experience, I see that they generally don't last very long.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Have you come up with any ideas to have a temporary library in East Falmouth when the construction is underway on the new library?
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly been something that's come up early and often, as soon as we found out that we were going to have this opportunity to pursue a new library in East Falmouth. The answer that I believe that makes the most sense is, we don't even know when construction funding will be available for certain. And there's so many shifting sort of dynamics behind locating a space and outfitting it and everything else, that we want to have a good idea of when that would be needed so that we can be as sort of targeted as to when those services would begin and when they would end. So I think, realistically speaking, we will probably have sort of a six-month heads-up from the state that funding is going to become available before we would then need to seek local funding here. And so I think, once we have that idea of funding's coming up, that's when we'll really start to look into it. But I know, I think I speak for everybody that we want to, you know, continue to offer library services in the village of East Falmouth during, you know, probably an 18 to 24-month, you know, construction period.
Right. Might be tough to scramble, though, in six months.
It could be. Yeah. And I think, you know, certainly it's in the back of our head, and we'll be as creative and sort of nimble as possible. But yeah, you're right. We should, we should probably start sooner rather than later.
At least get some ideas.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Very quickly, just want to say thank you and shout out a couple of your programs that you haven't mentioned that I particularly love with the embrace of the library as more than maybe the traditional model. And one is the Library of Things.
Yeah.
Being able to, I've got a puzzle at home right now, but puzzles, games, all that sort of thing, right, is just fabulous. And then, I think we too often take for granted all of the digital offerings that you have. I mean, I take out library books probably three times a month without ever setting foot in the library through Libby and CLAMs and the Network of Massachusetts Libraries that has opened up to us through the sharing between libraries of digital materials. So thank you for that. It's terrific.
Yeah. And we continue to even, invest even more in that. The usage of digital materials is just going up every year. And we're, we understand that, and we embrace that. It's not something we think is a bad thing by any stretch. And, you know, movies, audiobooks, there's so much that you can get digitally through the library with your CLAMs card, totally for free.
Just think you need more than two weeks to read.
I don't disagree with you.
Be honest with you.
I'm a slow reader, despite the professional role of it. But yeah, I agree. I'm always excited when I get that renewal.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay. We'll now hear from the Agricultural Commission.
Stan Ingram. So I've been on the AgCom for a number of years, and we continue to take on more, I don't know, not responsibilities, but we seem to take on more projects, I guess. So I'll start off this year, at this time of year, I usually can come and say we had a great cranberry harvest, but I can't do that this year. We, we had good blossom set, and we were out there cleaning off the brush and the grass. And when I went out there towards the middle of August to check on berry production, there was hardly anything to be found. So apparently, there was a cold night that I wasn't aware of, not that I could have done anything or anybody could have done anything on the bog that took out most of our blossoms. So we'll, we'll hit that again next year and hope for better growing season. But the bog looks good. We're keeping up on that. And so we're doing that. We submitted a budget to the town for the Agricultural Commission, asking for a huge budget of $2,000 a year. That's to cover a couple of printing projects that we've developed two trifolds. One is a listing of the farms in town, and the other is just a general agricultural information brochure. And so we were looking for some funds in order to print those up on a yearly basis. And also, the work that we do on the cranberry bog is all volunteer, but we're using our own equipment. And we thought, well, maybe it's time that we sort of got a few dollars to pay for weed whacker cord and gasoline, and if some, one of our machines goes down to get it repaired. And we also would like to put up three signs on the main roads coming into town, designating the town as a right-to-farm town. And those would be, we would try to do one per year because they're pretty expensive signs. So that's what the budget's about.
Excuse me, can I ask, how many farms are there, the rough number here in Falmouth, that you consider operating farms?
I know the three bigger ones, and then there are a bunch of smaller ones that are, so Coonamessett, Pariah Dog, and Andrews Farm, the town-owned farm. And then there's, and I don't know her name, on Blacksmith Shop Road, has a farm stand. And I'm sure there's a bunch of other ones, smaller operations throughout town.
Thank you.
That I'm not aware of. We were asked, at the beginning of the year, Farming Falmouth, which is a nonprofit organization here in town, was looking to buy a parcel of land. And they asked us if we would be, carry the conservation restriction on that land because they were going to go to the CPC for funds and put that parcel into a conservation restriction. And we said, yes, we would be happy to do that. And so that sale went through in midsummer. And so we are the, we jointly hold that conservation restriction with the 300 Committee. And we also monitor the Andrews Farm Conservation Restriction for the town. And so I was, so this will be our first year walking the perimeter of the Farming Falmouth, the patch, they call it. And we will also be walking around Andrews Farm, making sure that everything is as it should be. I will say that Jeff Andrews continues to do a fine job maintaining the farm. He helps, Farming Falmouth has a field there, the community garden. There's actually two community gardens now. The second one started up this spring, and he has been more than generous in helping and guiding. So he's been a great steward and a great friend to our farming there at the, at Andrews Farm. Let's see. The one thing that I wanted to spend a little bit more time on is, you asked how many farms are in town? Well, I can't answer that in numbers. But I will say that we continue to lose viable farmland at what we consider an alarming rate. And one of the reasons is that Falmouth is a really nice town, and people want to live here, and developers know that. And so they, when a piece of farmland or agricultural land or any sizable piece of land that could be farmed comes up for sale, they're right there, money on the table to buy it up and develop it. What we would like to try to do as an Agricultural Commission is to, to sort of even off that playing field. We've had a couple of ideas, and I want to throw these out because it's above our level. One of the ideas, you are probably all aware that the county commissioners are looking at a luxury tax to help fund affordable housing on the Cape. We would like that 2% proposed tax split between affordable housing and farmland preservation. And so if the Select Board would like to put some weight behind that, that would be great. What we're looking for is a fund that we can tap into right there. What happens in some of the, well, happened at Andrews Farm, and they were more than willing to take the time that it took to go to town meeting, get CPC funds and all that, and fundraise. A lot of people who are selling property don't have that, that ability or don't want to take that time. They want, they want to put the property on the market. They want to get the money and go. And so what we're trying to do is figure out, how do we get a fund that we can tap into at a moment's notice? Sort of like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Is that true? Where the money's right there. If they need it, they can, they can, they can get it. What we're looking for is the town to, to set up a fund like that for agricultural preservation, that when a property comes on the market, that we can, we can actually go and either maybe not match the price, but at least put earnest money down, I think it's called, so that they know that we're serious, and then take the time to do the fundraising and whatever else we need to do in order to secure a property. That's one possibility. There was an article, I think, last week's Enterprise, two weeks ago, about the seasonal communities, and that Falmouth is not automatically, would not automatically be designated as a seasonal community. In that article, it said that, you know, that funds would be earmarked or available for permanent housing for arts and civic employees. And I thought, well, what about agricultural workers? I mean, they're, they're not on the upper end of the pay scale in anybody's book. And so having that, them listed or included in that list would really help out if the town ever went that, that direction. Let's see. The Agricultural Commission is partnering with the 300 Committee and Farming Falmouth to try to brainstorm on how to protect farmland. So we're, 300 Committee, when they get a parcel, somebody comes to them with a parcel that they think might have some agricultural possibilities, and they contact us and possibly work together on, on funding that. Mr. Murphy talked about the golf course. And I don't know where, where anybody is on, on the solar, but one of the articles that I came across, and I'll just throw this out there, you know, as an interesting tidbit, is that there's been a lot of research and work done on lifting your solar panels off, instead of ground mounting, they're up higher. And allowing, this article talked about raising sheep underneath them. And that it was a win-win. You got the panels, the panels offer a little shade for the sheep, and they can graze underneath, which allows them to keep the grass down so you don't have to have people in there mowing. So I thought, well, golf course has got grass. Just put the panels up higher if that ever comes to that, and we can raise, raise sheep. And that's, the only other thing that I would like to say while I have the podium is that we are down one member right now. Have a couple of members that are on their third term. So if anybody is out there and listening in and would like to join the Agricultural Commission, we would love to have you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you so much. I have a few things.
I have a few things.
Yes.
One, the seasonal communities designation comment period unfortunately ended on Halloween, but I did see people did actually mention housing.
I saw that at about six o'clock on Halloween, and I wrote it in.
Yeah, so, good on you.
Yeah.
And I now have a future agenda item based on your request for a potential agriculture fund. I'll put that in later, but I think that's a great idea. I filed an earmark when I was on the, to the general budget of the Falmouth Housing Authority when I was on that board for community garden space. I don't think it's gone anywhere, but that's something that I wanted to know how, if it would be possible with, with the committee getting involved with. I think that there are so many properties in town, I think the Housing Authority is the best example of this, where the community really goes there, or for the Housing Authority's sake, you have a large dense populations of people, where it makes sense to build community farm space. Do you think that's something that the committee would, would be interested in and could, could really help drive?
We, we actually looked at a six-acre parcel a week ago on Sunday, and we looked at it, walked over it, and they asked what my feeling was, and I said, well, you know, I think we could put a couple of these acres into permanent conservation, and we could take a little bit of that land and make it into a community garden, because there wasn't a community garden in that part of town right now. And then, and use a little bit of that for a cluster, affordable cluster housing, totally affordable, to help us maintain our safe harbor.
Awesome.
So that's, yeah, that's, I think that's, whenever you, we're looking at a parcel, we have to look at all of those issues, you know, conservation, affordable housing, and...
And then, short-term, 2,000 is nothing. If we, you know, found a way to give you guys more money in the short-term, do you think there's something that you would be able to do with that beyond two grand?
Well, yeah, and, yes, I mean, you know, if you give somebody money, they're going to find a way to spend it.
Hope so.
But right now, that's fine. I mean, that's all, all we need to do at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Some questions along the same lines. I love that you're talking with the 300 Committee and Farming Falmouth and working together there. I think we've seen some really positive collaborations between the 300 Committee and Habitat for Humanity.
Yes.
Over the past couple of years of combining, instead of trying, putting housing and conservation at loggerheads, of really working together to meet both of those goals, when there are parcels that are large enough for that. And so your comments put me in mind of, I don't know if that conversation is already going, or could start to go with the Affordable Housing Committee, perhaps with some of the affordable housing nonprofits in town, to open up that conversation and talk about, I think, to Jack's point, right, there's been a trend for, I don't know, and you would know better than I, but, you know, five, 10 years of building housing communities centered around or with shared garden and farming space would be great to see that, I think that entered the conversation a little bit when the Andrews Farm, right, was, was being discussed. So, so thinking about ways that we can combine and meet both of those goals really creatively, I think would be great. And then the other thing is, I wonder if you've talked with Falmouth Cultural Council at all about collaborations there, because another thing that strikes me is that a lot of our farms, in addition to being vital food sources, are also increasingly venues for educational, cultural, arts kinds of events, and there, there might be some, some collaborations there to at least help raise the profile, right, of, of the role that farms are playing in, in the town.
Right.
And, yeah, just...
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Great report.
Yep, great report. Thank you. Okay, we will now discuss the fiscal year 2027 operating budget policy. Mr. Enshaw?
Mr. Chairman, it's a busy time of the year to be a finance director. Laura Sitter, our finance director, is here to kind of lead the discussion, but as Laura's working her way up to the podium, I want to say that this, this document that the select board approves each year, the operating policy, budget operating policy document, kind of serves as the cornerstone, if you will, really sets the priorities, the parameters of our operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year '27. As you all likely anticipate, and we're seeing now, it's going to be a challenging year. So I think these parameters and, and mileposts and, from regards, if you will, have never been more important. You know, looking at revenues and being conservative with our forecasting is important, and this document is a very important piece of that. So I'm going to let Laura kind of walk us through this document. Laura?
Hi. So each year, you guys approve a, a budget policy for the next fiscal year's budget, and that's what we've given you tonight to look at and hopefully approve. Key elements that are in the fiscal year '27 policy include continuing to require the use of conservative revenue estimates, no proposition two-and-a-half overrides, financial and economic challenges that may impact operations, and some information, general information on reserve funds. And I will tell you that the town manager's recommended budget is due to the select board by January 1st, so we're in the process of putting that together as we speak. And I would just generally say, we just talked about a couple of these things, so I wanted to maybe talk about, a little bit about the fact that some of the challenges that we think that we're going to be facing this year include increased health insurance premiums. We had an 8% increase last year. We're hoping it will not exceed that this year, but all federal and state and local reports are that health insurance premiums could be in the double digits. So that's a significant cost to the town and schools. Our retirement system, right now, we're trying to comply with the state law that requires that the unfunded liabilities and pension plans be eliminated by 2040. We have a plan in place, the Falmouth retirement system has a plan in place right now to have us pay off that unfunded liability by fiscal year 2034, but that's requiring 8% increases each year. So right now, for fiscal year '27, the 8% increase is a little over $1 million for a total of, total annual contribution of $13.7 million that's going into the retirement system each year. Obviously, I think most people are aware that there's elevated national and local inflation rates, and that's impacting salaries and operating costs. We expect that to continue to impact salaries and operating costs for the town, Falmouth Public Schools, the Upper Cape Regional School District Technical School. And we also see that operating costs are still somewhat impacted, some more than others, by tariffs and continuing supply chain interruptions. So that does impact some of our operating costs. We also expect a reduction in interest rates, so that will reduce any revenue, can reduce the revenue that we're receiving on our, our cash and investments. And we think there's, we just, there's cautionary that national policies may impact funding sources for transportation, housing, social programs, educational programs, which may or may not affect Falmouth. The reserves, I just will tell you generally, the general stabilization fund balance is a little over $8.8 million, which does, is above, or it does exceed the overall policy goal of 5%. The capital improvement and debt stabilization fund is at $19.4 million, and that combined with the other stabilization funds in the unassigned general fund balance also meets or exceeds the town's fiscal policy of 15%. Balance in the OPEB trust fund is $7.5 million. Liability at June 30th was $142 million. So basically, the plan is that once the town has achieved full funding of the pension liability, the, yeah, it will be a priority to increase the annual contributions to the OPEB trust fund. And I just want to reiterate some of what Mike just said. I think, what I'm hoping is that we can bring something within the next couple of months to the select board to sort of look at the operating and capital costs that the town is facing over the course of the next few years, certainly in the next five to 10 years, and talk about possibly finding a way forward to address some of that, because the, there's a, there will be a significant gap between the revenues and costs without, until we, unless we can figure out a way to sort of address some of that. That's all I have.
Questions? We're going to be asked to take a vote and adopt this?
Traditionally, there's been a request of the select board to approve and adopt the fiscal operating policy.
Well, the only concern I have is, if I could, I just think we're going to be up against it with the Affordable Housing Fund. I think we're going to probably have to reappropriate where we're headed here with this. I don't think that's going to really do it for the year. Do you think, you think we'll get by?
So you're looking at me? I'm happy to respond. I can't see Mike. There's just no simple answer to that question. So as Laura is alluding to, we, there's no extra money in the till. So the, the town manager and ultimately the board are going to be faced with some very difficult challenges. Do I think that we have, will have demands on the Affordable Housing Fund that we cannot meet in the coming year? Yes, I do. Can we find a way to find another $5 million to meet those demands? Not without a tax increase, as far as I can see, unless, you know, we want to significantly reduce payroll and, you know, have reductions in force and, and shrink the headcount.
What would we do then if we get to a point where we have a project that comes to us and wants to be funded, and we just say, sorry, we can't help you?
That's correct.
Are there going to be any of those in the pipeline, or, I mean, that are growing projects?
So Kim and our community services development director, I should say, do a great job kind of monitoring that pipeline. That's what we're referring to, Doug. So yes, I anticipate there will be projects this year in that pipeline that we're going to be in a position of, and I, I, I think it's indicative of our, of our need, as Laura's indicating, to have a better plan going forward. In the absence, you'll read in some of these pages about, you know, in the absence of additional new revenues. You know, we tried, I think it was a couple of years ago, right, with regards to generating some additional revenue source.
Right.
For affordable housing, and that, that was unsuccessful. However, we're going to have to get more creative, and we're going to have to pay, pay strict attention to that funding, available fund. Kim has done a great job, I think, putting together a report, which we've asked her to bring to the select board, so we can all, as a group, be part of that monitoring and kind of knowing where we're at at a given point in time with regards to the balance in that fund. You all know there's two sources, right? The, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and then the CPC monies that are available, and different criteria apply. So we're going to have to do a better job being aware and diligent about how we're doling that money out, knowing that there's projects, very worthy, worthwhile projects in that pipeline that we're going to be hard-pressed to fund.
Yeah.
That's a long answer to that question, but...
Appreciate it.
Mr. Reed?
Paragraph three of the introduction talks about how in fiscal year '25, we made significant strides toward hiring needed staff and establishing competitive wages, and then FY '26 budget established a slightly increased baseline for municipal services offered within a sustainable operating budget. What is it going to be for 2027? Is it hold tight and hold hard and not look to do anything new? Or, you know, what is that, you know, one sentence look like for '27?
That's a great question. So we're actually, the departments have been working hard preparing their, their requests. We're going to be starting tomorrow, actually, starting to meet with those departments. My answer to that question, we're going to have to be really tactical about how we apply. You know, we don't have, as Peter just indicated, there's not, there's not a huge surplus, right, of revenue. And so we're going to have to be very tactical and strategic, both, in applying, you know, looking at, one of the few agenda items coming up, right, is talking about an initiative that we know is going to be a multi-year kind of implementation. That's going to have an impact, we believe, on, on the request for FY '27, to meet that timeline for implementing that, that initiative. So just, again, extra diligence, we're going to have to be aware, very much aware of the strategic plan priorities of the select board, and you hold us to meet a task, making sure that we're allocating those resources to meet the objectives and goals of that, of that plan.
Jack?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Three things. First, thank you very much. I think this is very comprehensive, and, you know, I just want to be abundantly clear, this has nothing to do with mismanagement by the town, but rather the reckless actions, actions of an administration in Washington, DC that doesn't care about working people. I mean, you directly mentioned that policies like tariffs will, and cuts could affect social services and transportation costs, and healthcare premiums are skyrocketing. There's nothing that this people in this room can do that has, the scale of disruptions that we are facing, there's nothing that this board or previous boards of the town administration has done, and I just want to be abundantly clear about that. And it's a damn travesty, pardon my language. Second, but I think this shows the need for a regional approach on some of these larger issues. You know, we talked about the real estate transfer fee, and, you know, I think it's going to be Barnstable County is really going to have to work, and us are going to have to work as, as voices of, of our constituents to really advocate for some of these bold initiatives at a larger level, because, as the town manager just mentioned, we're going to have to get creative, and I think part of that is thinking beyond the scope of, of this board, within the capacity of what can we do as a board. So working with our state, federal partners, and, you know, the Assembly of Delegates on the one particular issue. And one, one thing that I've been interested in, a critique I have of, not, of, of governments in America is, I think we spend a lot on consultant fees rather than trusting town staff, and I think this is an issue with, around the country. I was wondering if, if maybe we could have an agenda item on this, where we could look at how much that we, as a town, have spent the last 10 years or so on consultant fees, and how much did that lead to either another study or to action happening? Because I think that we have an incredibly talented, you know, led by Mike and Peter, we have an incredibly talented town staff here, and, you know, I, I think that could be just one way where we could, we could cut down on costs. So I'll get off the soapbox, but those are, those are my three things.
Mr. Wilson, you had?
Yeah, I, Mr. Reed, I really like your question in terms of that, what will the FY '27 one sentence look like? And I will say, I think that this policy is, with one area I'd like to discuss a little bit, I think is, is the right policy in terms of being conservative, in terms of our forecasting, and very responsible with our funding. I agree with you that we need to be, Mr. Manager, that we need to be very creative as a town, I think, in all four areas of our revenue sources, especially going forward. We're going to be talking in a couple of agenda items about our, our property taxes, one of those, but really making sure that we are looking out for an understanding that right now, not having a ton of federal funding on our books is, is putting us in a stronger position, because we're not seeing large hits. But I think looking for those for every opportunity and being more creative and aggressive about finding state and federal opportunities, and where possible, generating state and federal opportunities, working with our, our other elected officials to, to do that, and also thinking about our other revenue sources as a town, whether that's fees or just, because the, the one part of the, the, the policy that I have a really hard time with is this idea of establishing a level service budget. And I understand the realities of the year and the fact that it's quite possibly necessary, but I keep coming back to the really powerful mission and vision language that we've set as a town, and you don't get to being a premier town by setting level service and, and, and doing, you know, the minimum. And I don't think that's what we're typically doing. I think we're facing a really hard situation here this year, and we have a really, a number of really challenging years coming up, which is where I think that creativity is going to come in. But I just, I have a really hard time saying, we're going to... But I just, I have a really hard time saying, "We're going to just try to hold tight," and that's the best that we're going to try to aim for in the coming year, knowing that, if anything, the town's needs, our residents' needs are only going to be more, and that we're going to have to get creative about how we meet the needs of our town moving forward.
So, the question is, assuming we have to be creative or think about it, what's, what's our timeline for, for doing that and possibly, you know, taking some, some, some actions that will help us address the comments?
Yeah, so, the timeline is tight. Laura mentioned earlier that by charter, the budget has to be, the draft budget, town manager recommended budget, is presented to the select board by January 1. Finance committee is going to be anxiously awaiting that product. We're looking at, again, the next two weeks reviewing the departmental requests. And there's a lot in there. There's some staff, I know of some staffing requests. We're going to weigh the value compared to the cost. There's some technology upgrades, important technology upgrades. So, again, trying to balance and do that cost benefit analysis. So, Chairman, to your point, the timeline's tight. We're going to, I think, have two cracks at this, depending upon how quickly we can put the product together after meeting with the department heads over the next couple of weeks in December, to vet and just have those discussions. But yeah, creativity is going to be at a premium, trying to identify. In December, we're going to be bringing, the vice chair mentioned fees. We're going to be bringing a couple, a couple of departmental requests for fee increases, quite frankly. We're always looking at where we're at in comparison to other communities, but where are we at compared to our needs, right, in terms of funding some of, some of the services? And expanding, if not holding that line steady. So, we'll be, we'll be bringing that to you in December as well. So, we're constantly looking at new revenue streams to support doing better, not status quo, but looking to enhance our service delivery in certain areas.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Just to go off Vice Chair's gold at some points. She said every, you know, challenging times ahead for the people who are living here. Everyone has increased needs, but the money isn't there. At the same time, we're seeing home sales over $1.5 million for parts of town that no one would ever consider to be like that. Rich people buying up houses here and then never even stepping foot in it. And, you know, I'm really, I'm really glad the residential exemption is on this agenda for a future item because I really, really think that, in whatever ways we can leverage off of the summer population who are not contributing to this community as much as they used to, the dream of, of, you know, you work hard as a teacher and you can have your summer house on Cape Cod, that's not a thing anymore. It's hedge fund managers who thinks, who own houses here. I have a question, I think this is for, for Town Council, on Proposition Two and a Half. Can we, you know, if we raise taxes, and I would like to do it in a way where it affects the summer population, which, another thing, but is there a way to do it to just say that the town of Falmouth is requesting a Proposition Two and a Half increase for the health of the financial budget? Or is that too vague based on the language of Prop Two and a Half?
I don't know the answer as I sit here, but I'd be happy to look into that and report back to the board.
Because that's just something that I know has been floated in certain circles, you know, with the increase of wealth in Barnstable County, if there's a way that, you know, towns on the Cape could increase our budgets without directly impacting the people who live here. But also, you know, you want to do it where, like, these people can pay more than 2.5% more. And I just, I think Proposition Two and a Half is handicap towns, but, you know, that's my opinion, and I won't go on that tangent. So, I just think it's worth looking into.
One more thing.
Sure.
So, did I hear you correctly, on the OPEB trust fund, the other post-employment benefits, we're going to have to come up with 13.7 million next year?
No. The retirement plan.
Oh, okay.
The town's retirement plan.
Okay. And that's on, so that's not really a new surprise to us, or is that just a new state mandate?
No. That's, it's just that the 8% increases from now until 2034, as our, you know, 8%. So, in fiscal year '27, 8% is a little over $1 million, and that just increases each year, obviously by the increase in the contribution.
The exponential growth, yeah.
But our obligation is to be done by 2040, but we're going to try to do it by 2034? Is that?
Well, right now, we're scheduled to do it by 2034.
Right.
The law says 2040, but my understanding is that PIRAC?
PIREC, yeah.
PIREC will not allow municipalities right now to go beyond 2035 or, at the most, 2036 because they think it will take four to five years after the deadline to actually get to the point where there's no unfunded liability. You still have your, your normal cost, but the unfunded liability would be gone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I add on to that discussion of the, of the pension? I think it fits with the board's request that we be creative. The finance director and I met with the Falmouth Retirement Board a couple of weeks ago to talk about the funding schedule. So, this is what you were just talking about, what's the timeline to meet the statutory requirement? Right now, it's at least one year ahead of the required, the PIREC required schedule. And then there's this whole thing that, you know, I think Laura and I are still trying to really get a firm understanding on of the statutory date is 2040 when we have to be fully funded. But PIREC says back it up five years. And it was explained to us by the retirement board that, you know, there could be a market gyration that really sets you back, right? So, there's, there's merit in that thinking. There's also merit in the thinking that the goal is wrong, that the whole idea of being fully funded for a pension system of our size, 100% forward funded, is, is not necessary. That, and I say that only, that's state law. We're not going to change state law, and we don't want to, you know, tilt at windows, windmills necessarily. But there is at least one year that the Falmouth Retirement, Retirement Board locally accelerated the schedule. So, our ask to the retirement board was, give us that extra year. Every year of extra time means a little bit less annual increase, and that's a really big hit to our budget. A big chunk of our new revenues each year is going to that increased pension contribution. And we also asked them to engage an outside auditor to look at, you know, either through an actuarial analysis or an evaluation of the statute and negotiation with PIREC, can we go further than a one-year extension? That would provide some significant relief for the budget in the next couple of years.
But we can't be the only town that's dealing with this problem.
Exactly.
So, there must be concerted lobbying to do that.
It's probably good to try to stay on that track as close as possible, but I imagine when it gets close to the date, there's going to be a lot of towns that are completely failing, and they're going to probably push the date.
Exactly right. And maybe at that point, there's an opportunity for us to organize with the MMA and other communities and say, "Hey, this whole 100% thing, you know, that's probably not the right number. Let's talk about 85, 90%. What's, what's a more realistic number?" Because the whole notion is, you know, in, in the private world, if Kodak goes bankrupt, right, how is it going to meet its pension obligations other than going to a federal fund? Kodak did go bankrupt, they didn't have enough money for their pensions, so that's a real issue. Town of Falmouth could have really, you know, difficult times for reasons we can't necessarily predict. But we're not going to disappear. Our revenues aren't going to go to zero. So, do we really need to be 100% funded?
I'll have to ask the lieutenant governor at the similar meeting at MMA conference.
Yes.
Well, to that point, I mean, I think that's the kind of creativity and not only, to be clear, pushing that creativity onto town staff, but for this board to be creative and also really proactive about advocating up for what our town needs from state and federal colleagues, not just accepting the framework as it is and, you know, because to be conservative within the framework that we have is the right approach. But we need to be proactive about making sure that that framework is the best that it can, can possibly be.
And I will say, the lieutenant governor is a fantastic partner. You know, having been a municipal elected official, she really understands and is really invested in a lot of the issues.
Takes time to meet with us every year.
Yeah.
More than once, actually.
Do we have consensus on a position with respect to the operating policy for this evening?
I think it's a reasonable policy, and I move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would like to offer one amendment, that we strike the level service budget language to simply say that the town of Falmouth will seek to establish a budget which limits increases in order to maintain or improve operations within the Proposition Two and a Half levy limit.
Is that language important?
Which pays?
Yes. With the, whether it's the existing language or the proposed language, yes, it's important.
The level service.
Does the town have any, does the town staff have any issue with the amended language?
No, I understand, I understand Vice Chair's point with this, and I have no objections. Laura, do you have any concerns about altering that, amending that language?
So, we're basically just taking out a level service budget. We'll seek to establish a budget which limits increases in order to maintain operations within the Two and a Half levy limit.
It won't necessarily be a level service budget, if we're only seeking, seeking it.
Right, but I think the Vice Chair's language better reflects that than the current language.
If the policy is to seek that, that's what we're most likely going to end up with. And so, the amendment I'm proposing is not to set that necessarily. Is the goal still saying, within the Proposition Two and a Half levy limit, but setting a budget that maintains or improves operations within the Proposition Two and a Half levy limit?
And we could, just one last comment on this. So, I think it gives us a little bit more flexibility. I, I, where was I going with this? I think it's going to force us, you know, beyond creativity, we're going to have to look at how we can leverage and become more efficient. So, so not necessarily do you have to increase spend, right? You can find deficiencies and become more effective at doing something through the use of technologies, right? So, I think that's part of the creativity that Peter and I, working with the staff, are going to have to come up with, where we leverage technology to become more efficient, more effective. So, we reduce, we provide enhanced services at a reduced cost. I mean, that's the ideal, I think, right? That's, that's what we're going to shoot for. That's, that's a difficult, we've got a lot of work to do between now and January 1st.
Maybe all stickers and things are online only.
So, do you accept that amendment, Mr.?
Yes, I do. I accept that amendment and the motion to approve.
And I still second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Very much. Okay, now, we will consider a vote to approve the solar carport canopy notice of lease and lease agreement with Select Energy Development LLC for the Falmouth High School Lot C, Teacher Lot at 1200 Gifford Street Extension. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments are going to be brief, and I'm going to turn it over to the expert. As you all know, Stephanie Madsen, our sustainability specialist extraordinaire, has been working really hard with the schools over the year and a half, a long time.
Two years.
Seems like two years. And she's yielding terrific results. You're going to hear a presentation, short presentation with regards to this high school project, North Falmouth Elementary, sorry to cut them.
Two, both.
Two projects.
Can we, can we kind of combine these two matters? I mean, we know we have separate votes, but as far as your presentation, essentially the same.
It's combined.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, we shouldn't need.
Couple separate, couple separate motions on the projects.
Separate votes, yeah, we'll need a separate vote.
There's the efficiency.
Great to be here, thank you. I'm Stephanie Madsen, the sustainability specialist for the town. I'm here with Paul Dart, the Director of Finance and Operations for the school. And the only slides I'm showing are, is the image of the two solar carports that we're asking you to approve a 25-year lease for these two locations. This is a nice Google Earth image. I added these boxes. These are not expertly done, but it gives you some sense of where they are, set back, away from the road, not visible from the road. But I'm here tonight in support of approving a 25-year lease, lease agreements for two solar carport canopy installations, one at Falmouth High School Lot C, which is called the Teacher Lot, and the other in the rare parking lot of North Falmouth Elementary. This proposal represents the culmination of a very thorough and collaborative process. We've carefully evaluated all potential school and municipal sites for solar, reviewed both ownership and power purchase agreement models, and selected the options that provide the best long-term financial and operational benefits for the town and the school district. The school leadership executed the power purchase agreement with Select Energy in August. And the leases were reviewed and negotiated in detail by Town Council. There are no capital costs to the town. Select Energy will own, install, operate, and maintain the systems over 25 years, a 25-year lease term, and the town retains the option to purchase the systems after seven years. The Falmouth High School Lot C canopy alone is projected to save the district more than $800,000 over the lease term, while also supporting our broader commitments under the Green Communities Program, the town's climate action plan, and the Select Board's strategic plan goals for energy and sustainability. We believe these projects are well-positioned to deliver both financial and environmental value to the community, and we respectfully request your approval, approval of the lease agreements tonight.
Hey, everyone. My name is Paul Dart, Director of Finance and Operations for the school system. These two projects represent evolution and cooperation between the town and the public school district on energy-related projects. You know, we've gone from small projects, like water heaters being replaced at different buildings, to now these two major solar projects. It's, it's a big change in what's been going on in the past. We'd like to really, the school system, like to extend its gratitude to, for the expertise of Stephanie Madsen. She's been terrific. This is not a project that we could have come up with on our own. So, having that resident expertise at the town level has really allowed us to, to move quickly on this. And to add some more detail, the size of the project at Falmouth High School is around 14,000 square feet. It will produce about 15% of the electricity that's currently used at the high school. The size of the project at North Falmouth is around 12,000 square feet. It will produce about 88% of the current electricity used at North Falmouth. Total savings, as Stephanie mentioned, for the high school is 826,000 over the 25 years. At North Falmouth, it would be just over 1.1 million for the combined of about, just under $2 million, 1.939. On top of that, it will save over 3,500 tons of CO2 at the high school and about 2,800 tons of CO2 at the, at North Falmouth. So, again, with no capital cost outlay, you know, even in the first year, the savings will be around $38,000. With that, I can answer any questions.
There's a much larger parking lot in the back of the high school. Can we cover that, too?
Oh.
Go ahead.
We've discussed that at length. We had several proposals, including the curved parking lot at the high school by the tennis courts. The con, understanding where the transformers are, what the electric capabilities are, having to trench a conduit all the way to the high school where the service room is, and make it, it made it very difficult to pencil out and be affordable as a power purchase agreement. We can do it in the future. I'm glad you asked because I will make a note to pursue that. We do have federal tax incentives going away in July. That's why we're moving forward with these, as long as we have construction underway by July 4th, 2026. The developer qualifies for that 40% off tax incentive. So, we need to, to move quick. But it doesn't prohibit it from happening in the future again, when we are ready and the infrastructure in Cape Cod has really been upgraded and advanced, there'll be a lot more opportunity for bigger solar projects.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Richardson and Ms. Golds?
To keep going, parking lot for parking lot. What about Mullet Hall and the big one right there?
We reviewed every parking lot at every school, every rooftop. We started with the first two easiest ones. There's Noah Butters, you can't see them from the road. Hopefully, we won't get much pushback, so.
Hopefully, we won't get much pushback, so if these go through, we have a lot of success with them, we'll see what happens with other schools. This is just the beginning.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstone?
I don't understand why people don't want to see them.
Thrilled to be a part of discussing these projects now on two different boards, first as a school committee member, and now to see it coming to us, so that's terrific. A Falmouth Public Schools student who resides in my house may have looked over my shoulder this weekend while I was reviewing my packet and had two questions that I said I would pass on. I think they're both pretty easy. Why don't the canopies cover the entire parking lot? Why are they kind of in the, the middle? And this is really nothing to do with the solar projects, but while we're talking renewable energy at the high school, I think we've got the right person. What about the wind turbine that sits there? Is that ever coming back online?
At the high school? You have to answer that one. But maybe we should tackle solar first. You need to, there are, there are regulations and restrictions for sizing any solar array. You need to be able to have traffic move around comfortably. There are buses and parents picking up kids, so this was all discussed in part of the design. Fire trucks have to be able to be, to get access to various locations as well. This is a carport, not a rooftop, but there are regulations now to leave a buffer, so a firefighter could access the roof. So, there are a lot of things that evolve and change with requirements. It's best to leave a buffer. Also, we don't want to cut any trees down, so shading is an issue, too. When you make it a little more condensed and tight, there'll be no need to trim trees.
Also, just for the economics of the support, it's best to have the carports built so that two parking spaces, if you go to a single aisle, it becomes quickly uneconomical.
I knew there would be a good answer, I just didn't know what it was, so, glad I asked.
Yes, Mr. Reed?
I just wanted to commend the lease for the removal at the end of term. I think something that we always receive in our emails are the concerns of what it would take to remove these at end of life or when they're broken, so appreciate that it's under there, under the lease. I would like to note that if we do exercise the purchase option, this will have ramifications, I believe, on future budgets if we are already tight. That's something we're going to have to monitor for the years in which we could make the purchase option. But thank you for having it in there, because I think that's extremely important and on the minds of our residents here. With that, pending no further discussion, I'd like to make the motion, we have to make them independently correct.
Yep.
So, I'll start with the motion to approve notice of lease and lease agreement with Select Energy Development LLC for Falmouth High School Lot C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, just in line with that.
Keep it rolling, Mr. Reed.
Trying, looking for the language. Motion to approve notice of lease and lease agreement with Select Energy Development LLC for the North Falmouth Elementary solar carport canopy at 62 Old Main Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, good job.
Thank you.
Keep them coming.
Will, I might be here soon.
Okay, now, without any more fanfare, let's discuss the requirements and necessary resources for implementing a residential property tax exemption. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is exciting. In the two and a half years I've been here, we've talked about this, kind of the 30,000-foot level for, a couple, a few times. My ask of the Finance Director Laura and our new Director of Assessing, Melissa, was to come with some, some details, so that we can kind of get a perspective on what it might take. Well, first, give an overview of what it is, Residential Property Tax Exemption Program, the benefits, and, and then a deeper dive than perhaps we've had in the past, some illustrations of the cost to make a successful implementation. So, with that, Laura, if you're ready to, to kick off, I'm going to let Laura kind of walk us through, between Laura, Melissa, Peter, and I, hopefully we can answer any questions you may have.
I'm just wondering if actually we'll be.
What's that? Nope.
Let's see, I think you, did you email to Mike and I the final presentation?
It's on, on.
If you go to Civic Plus, you might be able to download it from, straight from there.
All right, so I'll get started, if you'd like.
I don't know if you guys know this, but I like the policy.
It's going to cost some money.
So, we were asked to put together a discussion of, first of all, what is a residential tax exemption specifically, or as specifically as.
Laura, you're going to have to move a little closer to the mics so that it can pick up on.
So, what is the tax exemption, and then also, what, what would it take to implement a residential tax exemption in Falmouth? And what would we need to consider? What kind of costs may be involved? What kind of resources might be involved? And what kind of, you know, what does the exemption do, and what kind of benefit does it give to year-round residents? Or essentially residents who consider one of their properties, if they have more than one, their, their primary residence as defined by state law as the residence that they claim on their tax return. And that's key, because I think when we start to talk about eligibility and how to determine whether or not somebody's eligible, it will be important to remember that that's what the, the law says makes somebody eligible.
Could I stop you one there, for a second, Laura? Do they have to file their entire tax return, or just, just the first two pages that list where it's, where their residence is?
Well, so.
Entire tax return?
I would say no, but we haven't, I mean, my, our, our recommendation is that we actually ask them to submit the first two pages of their tax return.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope.
From their most recent year.
That's what they do in Mashpee.
Right.
Yeah.
But we also want to be careful, because we don't necessarily want to bring a lot of personal information from people into our systems and our storage, because we have to protect all of that information. So, in any case, so what is a residential tax exemption? Well, it's an option under Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C, and the exemption can be from anywhere from 0 to 35% of the average assessed value of all residential property in a given year. And it's, as I said, given to qualified applicants for their principal residence as determined by the address used on federal tax returns. It's not a reduction of the tax, it's a, it's a reduction in the assessed value, it's an exemption that gives you a reduction in, in your assessed value. Saying that, the town doesn't lose out on revenue for applications received prior to setting the tax, because what it does is it shifts the tax burden to those who are not eligible for it, or who did not apply for one, even if they might have been eligible. So, the tax rate will increase, and they have what's called a break-even point. And as we go through this, we'll start to, I'm sorry, I tend to read from my, my notes on my sheets, and I forget to move the thing forward, so. Which I assume we're just going to run this as a slideshow.
Yeah, I think you need to use the wheel.
On the mouse, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. So, how does it work? Well, the residential property owners will need to file an application. Now, we put in here each year because that's what the law requires, but realistically, towns that have implemented this tend to find that it's better over maybe every other year, every third year, because it's a massive amount of work to collect these applications, review them, and make those, those determinations. But the law does say each year. But when talking to other towns, that's not really what's happening in practice. The total value of the approved applications will increase the overall tax rate for all residential properties, because the total levy needs to be spread out over less assessed value. And that's how that works. And the state is, has given us a calculator, which makes it really easy to do a rough illustration, which you have several of in your, you have a couple in your packet, and there will be one in, in the, in the, in the screen here. So, the eligible property owner receives the exemption, assuming that they're approved, for the current assessed value, their value, the tax will go up, but the value of the exemption will lower their assessed value. So, there's a break-even point, but for houses that are generally lower to moderately priced, they'll get more of a benefit as you, as you start to have higher-valued properties, which is pretty significant higher value in the, in the town of Falmouth. They still get the exemption, but it obviously has less of an impact on their taxes.
Could you?
I mean, do we, do we know what that number is, or do you have an estimate about where that point is, when there's really not going to be much of a benefit to the homeowner?
Well, it, it shows you when we get to the illustration. Let me just, that's two pages in, so let me, I'll talk to you for that, I'll talk about that in a second. I just want to give you a couple statistics first, the only ones we know. We have 22, as of June 30th, or as of December 2024, there are 22,632 residential properties in Falmouth. We have no idea how many are owned by year-round residents, as would be defined under this statute. So, any illustrations that we've done are simply that, they're based on, okay, we, we use 70%. We've assumed 70%, we're, but we don't know if that's realistic. We have no idea how many actual people would be eligible to receive this. The average assessed value of residential property at December 20, 2024 was just shy of $905,000.
Million.
So, the exemption, let's say you did a 10% exemption, it would be $90,500, okay? All right, let's go to the illustration. I hope you can see this. Can you see that?
Can you make it for us?
I'm looking at it.
All right.
Packet.
Again, we just took a rough estimate. We assumed 70% eligible, single-family and condos, and we assumed even less for apartments, and it was in the neighborhood of 15%. So, making this assumption, this is an illustration of a 10% exemption. Now, you can go anywhere from, as I said, 0 to 35%. Most towns that we've talked to do not recommend you start out with a really high exemption, because it can cause sticker shock, severe sticker shock, to properties that are not eligible. But in this case, the taxes would run, would go from our tax rate, current tax rate of 587 to 627 for a 10%. And you can see here, there's a break-even point at the 1.4 million dollar value of a property, where, so they would get no benefit in terms of a reduction in their tax, and they wouldn't see an increase, even though the tax rate went up. That's called the break-even point.
How does that happen? How does that kick in? I don't understand it really. Would you mind?
So, it's just.
No, fine.
It's shifting, it's just shifting the value, and as I, I mean, I didn't go through all the calculations, because the state is nice enough to give us a, I've done it in the past with other, in other municipalities.
So, if, if I've got a property that's worth 1.2, and you take, you don't take 10% off of it, you take a lesser percent?
No, you take 10% off. But 10% off of 1.2 million dollars is not nearly as much of a reduction in your taxes as 10% off of a $100,000 property is. Okay? So, you're paying the same tax rate, you're getting the same exemption, but if I have a $500,000 house, and you're taking $100,000 off of my property, and my taxes, so it's, it's a reduction in the tax per property, right? So, the lesser valued get a higher reduction in their taxes, because their taxes weren't that high to begin with.
Oh, I get you.
Okay? So, $100,000 in this example says that that person's tax would go from 587 to 5957. And that would be a reduction in their tax bill of $527, essentially. When you get to 1.2 million, your taxes will go down by $87.43. However, if you're not eligible, and you go to the other extreme, you're going to be paying an, an increase in taxes with a 10% exemption of about $616.57.
And could you, could you just describe who that is, who isn't eligible?
Sure. So, if there, if somebody's living here, has property here, there's a residential property, and it's not their primary residence, they're not going to be eligible.
Thank you.
But, but if I may, Laura, in addition, people with houses more than 1.4 are going to be paying more even if they are year-round residents as a result of this.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Once you start, they still get the exemption, but yes.
But, but, yep.
They won't have to pay, if they didn't have the exemption, they'd be paying more taxes. So, this shows everybody that's got the exemption, right? If they don't have the exemption, they're paying $6.27 on their entire assessed value. These are properties that get the exemption, that's showing in this illustration. So, their taxes will, so if you look at the $2.9 million valued property, their taxes without the exemption would be $17,000. Their tax bill with the exemption goes to 17, almost 18,000, so it's a $616 increase, but if we.
But that's because the rate's increasing.
That's, that's exactly right.
So, they're paying more tax, they're getting the exemption, but they're paying higher tax because the mill rate, if you will, is, is going up.
That's correct.
Whereas if we didn't do anything, they wouldn't necessarily be paying more taxes.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also like to say that the law does state that the taxable valuation of property after all exemptions, so having a residential exemption doesn't mean that you're not also entitled to the veterans exemption, if you're entitled to that, and the senior. All of those exemptions, plus the residential, you can't reduce the value of the property below 10% for purposes of tax. They can't pay no tax, essentially. Any more questions on this particular slide?
That's a good slide, thank you. Mr. Reed?
Does that, do those numbers assume 100% participation rate? Because one of the stipulations in the original language are those who apply, and I'm guessing that there's going to be a high rate of people that don't apply, because they don't know about it. about it, so.
Well, we're going to have to make every effort to get out there and get people to apply who might be eligible as much as possible. Because the only way that this is revenue-neutral to the town is if we get those applications in before we set the tax rate. They are still eligible if they didn't apply, and they're still eligible for the exemption. They can apply during the abatement period, but that tax, that's a loss of tax money. It's a loss of revenue.
All right, thank you.
Through the overlay, but it's still a loss of revenue.
Okay, thank you.
So there needs to be, I've been through this in another community, there needs to be significant marketing, and it needs to be targeted to everybody in the community. And you need to look, we'll talk about this further on a little bit, but you need to look at people who are disabled. Make sure you're getting to those people. People who might have language barriers of some type. You really need to push this, needs to be very heavily pushed.
Mr. Brown?
I gotta say, I'm really discouraged by the initial outlook of the higher-income properties. It's not the effect I anticipated.
Nor me, nor I'm going to say neither did I, to be honest. When you see it like that, there is a.
It's the lower-value people, the lower-value properties, I should say, excuse me, is, it's more impactful on the people who can less afford it.
That's right.
I mean, it's helpful to the people, the local residents with the lower-value property, but it's extremely hurtful to the other folks that are in that same property value. And then when you get to the higher values, where you would think that the impact would be greater, it's actually negatively impacting the local residents. Counterintuitive.
It's not negatively impacting them. There is still an exemption that they receive.
Right. But it makes their taxes go up.
It does.
So it's not really.
It absolutely does.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, fine.
I mean, look, we're in an affordability crisis, and when I look across town, and when I talk to people, I think that there needs to be, with where we are, and I'm happy to go on record and say this, where can we reshift our tax burden? And we're looking at, we don't have enough police officers, we don't have enough firefighters, we don't have enough teachers. These are the property values that those people will be looking to get into, versus the 2.0, someone owns a $3 million house, is going to pay $600 more. I understand that there are, that could be a senior in this town, and then we would have to adopt another exemption for that. I just think that doing nothing, and I don't know if you talked to Mashpee at all, but they've seen tremendous success so far with implementing this, haven't seen that many complaints. Harwich just started, voted on this recently. Province Towns has been doing it for a long time. And I just think that the wealth, the way wealth has changed in this town, and who, looking exactly at who is that 2.9, that $3 million house, is really critical to look at, is who is actually paying more here? And it's, I'm willing to bet, you know, we're not voting on this tonight, I understand, is we can get the data to say, who is that person? And that person, I'm going to bet, can pay that extra money.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you're increasing the tax on the local person more than you are on the person without the exemption, if you look at that bottom line.
So, yeah, I'm.
I think it's just a different dynamic than we originally anticipated, now that we see the, you know, the data. But I will say, in a paraphrase.
Can I ask a question, though? Because I'm actually not clear on, I think I understand what your interpretation is, it's different than what my interpretation of this chart was. So this chart is only for the 70% who are residents, right?
That's correct.
This is not showing the tax bills for the 30% who are non-residents, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, excuse me.
I believe that's correct. That's the way I'm interpreting it.
Right, so this is, so the first column, without exemption, is our current tax structure, essentially. That's what the tax bill would be under the structure, for residents, under the new, under a system with an exemption, but that doesn't include what the tax bills for the 30% who are non-residents would look like.
That's correct.
Oh.
So I think, I think that's where there's additional information, that it would be good to see as we think about this.
I see. I thought that with the exemption was local residents, and without the exemption was non-residents.
No.
Okay. Totally reading it wrong. No wonder it didn't make sense.
I wouldn't be yoked for that.
As, you know, further along, as we get further along with looking at this, should you direct us to do that, we can certainly come in with a bunch of different examples that actually make sense on an individual basis for the different levels.
Yeah, I'd like to see the resident versus non-resident impact, that would be more.
I think that's really important to look at.
Yeah, that's what we need to know.
All right, we can do that.
I just know that part, and I'm, sorry, are you still going? I just think that putting a part of this agenda item is getting a timeline on this, and what do you?
Now we have.
Okay.
I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
That's why I asked, yeah.
All right, so some implementation considerations. First of all, as you can imagine, implementation will require time and resources. Staffing resources, we're, we know we're going to need at least one full-time administrative clerk year-round, and two temporary clerks for a period of three months, because what we envision is that there would be a three-to-four-month application process that would happen prior to, like, December 1st. There would be, and that total cost of that is $117,175 per year for salary and benefits. We know that we'll be programming costs for our CAMA system and our ERP systems. We're estimating that at $20,000. We haven't really gotten much in the way of quotes on that yet. We have some quotes on storage, which were higher than I anticipated. That's not on here, but, and that was in the neighborhood of $20,000 a year for storage. And we know that marketing funds, we're estimating that you'll need at least two mailings to all residential property owners, and some newspaper, obviously some newspaper ads, and the cost we're estimating for that is about $44,000.
Can we just include a flyer with the tax bill?
We can, but I don't think that that's going to do it. I don't think that's going to do it by itself. And tax bills go out in January, so.
Quarterly now.
We can't even. So anyway, let me, let me think about that. We also know that we will need some help from our IT staff, and then possibly now an outside contractor, to assist with setting up an online application process, that, an electronic storage system that protects personal information, because we'll have at least some information on people's tax returns that needs to be protected and encrypted. And so the estimate for the storage that we just got was 20K. We need to develop an application, instructions, and processes to handle and track the applications. We're limited in terms of space, and that's something that we need to think about, that's why it's on here. So if 60% of residential properties apply, that's just shy of 14,000 applications. So somebody, there has to be a place to collect those applications. It can't all be online, and it won't be all online, because people will bring stuff in. There have, and the supporting documents. Everything has to be reviewed, and then it has to be stored, somehow, some way. And there's not, there's not a lot of storage area, and now, we would probably want to try to scan everything in, so that everything could be stored in a safe and encrypted storage of some sort, but we'll have to figure all of that out. That's all part of what needs to happen. And then we would need to, just so that you're aware, that overlay reserve would have to increase in fiscal year '28, starting in fiscal year '28, if we go by the timing considerations on the next page, because that's when abatements would start to come in, and that's pretty, that's, those are large exemptions, and would have an impact on the overlay reserve by quite a bit, so. Because there will always be people that didn't get, didn't understand it, didn't apply, and then they find out after the fact that their neighbor, their taxes went down because of this exemption, and then all of a sudden, they want the exemption, and they're eligible, and we have to give it to them. In terms of timing, so the, what we, what we did is we put together a schedule with the earliest possible implementation, which would be fiscal year 2028, which means that the, and the way we got to that is the tax rates would need to be set in December of 2027. That means that staff needs to be ready to go by March of 2027, because you've got to get all of that work done, got to get the, at least the full-time person in place prior to June 30th, because you have to be able to do the mailings, develop the applications, come up with the processes, go out and get the quotes, get the CAMA and the ERP system programming done. All of that stuff will have to be done, so that really, as of June 30th or July 1st of 2027, you're set to go and can start taking applications, particularly in the first year. Or at the very least, give yourself at least three to four months to get applications in. And all of that has to be done, all the exemptions have to be processed and approved, that for people who are eligible, long before we come in here in the middle of December and say, these are what the tax rates need to be. So that means some of the funding needs to go on the 2027 budget, which we are obviously in the process of preparing now to get to you guys by January 1st. Okay. Other factors to be considered, we've talked about some of this already, the exemption, as I said, the exemption percentage can be anywhere up to 35%, and the advice from other towns was to start with a lower percentage. Now, we just gave you examples on the two extremes, okay? So your packet contains illustrations for a 10% and a 35%. We didn't go anywhere in between, but you can go anywhere in between those numbers. But we don't want to cause extreme sticker shock, and we will, I can get back to you with examples of what will happen to people who are non-residents. I want to make it clear, this does not impact commercial property in any way, shape, or form. So once you implement this, you'll essentially have two separate tax rates, but just because you're implementing, because your commercial tax rate is not going to be impacted. We need to determine how we're going to, or set a policy as to how eligibility is going to be determined, and as I said, I think the easiest, most straightforward way is asking for the tax return. And the marketing campaign, we talked about that briefly, but we need to think up creative ways to reach all residents as much as we can. And the decisions that will have to be made, obviously, are the timeline for implementation, the application period, the marketing campaign, and the exemption percentage. And that's all I have on the, on the actual presentation.
I have a question about the storage. Is it possible that we could just have the person either come in and show you those two pages, and you check off the box, and they, you certify it, and then they take their paperwork home? Or they could send you an email, and you review it, and you say, okay, and then don't store it? Does it have to be actually physically stored?
So it depends on how, how they want to actually file the application. So if you're doing, if somebody wants to come in, and they just want to bring their 2025 tax return in with them, they may have to wait in line, because I'm expecting that we're going to see pretty significant traffic into Town Hall as a result of this, if you move forward with it. But they can show us their tax return, and yes, we can check it off on a box and say, determined eligibility through tax return. If they want to apply online, they can't. They have to, they can't just say to us, oh, by the way, I used my, this is the address I used on my tax return. They have to prove that to us.
Well, they could scan it and send it, but then you just would look at it and say, okay, but then you don't have to actually store it. I'm just imagining if it's possible.
It, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yeah, please.
I think that that's an interesting question, and anything that we can do to reduce both file, you know, paper storage, and reduce the potential liability for storing personal information, you know, we need to look at all of that very carefully. One of the, you know, I think the regulations, we may need to consult with Department of Revenue in terms of an audit trail. If we don't have any documentation, and it's just someone's checked a box that someone was eligible for residential exemption, is that, is that going to pass muster with Department of Revenue? So good questions, we'll research it.
And the only thing I'll just say is that, you know, I think it's worth looking at the other towns in Barnstable County, which I see you have done, you've experienced doing that, but Barnstable does 25%, Chatham does 35%, and Eastham goes as low as 3%. And Mashpee went from 5% to, last year, they voted up to 20%, so. Is this something that's being done around the Cape? And I think we're looking at how.
No, I think, you know, I think we've come to a point where we have to be defined by who can afford to live here, and not necessarily who can come here to visit for a month or a week. It's a crisis, or at least a problem, that we need to address the affordability. So I think we should move forward with the, with the work and the backup to get us to a point where we can decide. And seasonal communities, the rate would go up, Jack?
So the seasonal communities designation would allow towns to go as high as 50%.
But I do think Ms. Citron makes a good point, that there's going to be sticker shock if we go forward.
Even I will not advocate for 50%.
We want to maybe take it a little slowly.
Mr. Chair and Town Manager, anything that we decide to go through, it still has to go to town meeting for approval, any tax change, correct, or no?
This is recorded on.
No.
No.
I believe it's just a select board vote, Laura, is that correct?
It, yes. As far as my understanding, I would want to have that double-checked, but it does not specify a legislative vote.
The seasonal communities designation would, so then if we wanted to, future board wanted to go to 50, that would, but the actual policy, I don't think it is.
So, Mr. Chair, what I'm looking for tonight, great discussion, looking for your guidance, so I can give direction to the Finance Director, the Chief Assessor, to put into motion those pieces, right? Assuming an FY28 implementation, which Laura said is the earliest, so that we can ensure that we have the resources that are going to be needed to meet that timeline loaded into this FY27 budget. That's my concern, that we miss, we miss a piece. So, and we're going to have an opportunity to discuss what exactly that is, the impact on the FY27 budget, next month, when we bring that recommended budget to you. So that's the direction. This is a discussion item, but I need just some guidance, is consensus on the board that this is something we want to move forward with.
Could I just suggest a couple of percents for the board to see what the breakdown would be, and, which I think would be based on what you said, and I just want to really commend you on all the work you put into this, this is fantastic. But if we could see 15, 20, and 25, and then I get Town Manager just to pursue that and see, you know, how much can we streamline some of those processes, like what Doug said, if there's any way that we can work on, you know, how can we make this cheaper, the initial implementation phase? And what does that, what is the actual mailing, the community forum, what do we do, what that steps look like? And then, I don't know, what makes sense in terms of bringing this up again to talk about, I mean, it may not be a while, but, you know, in terms of voting. about, I mean, it may not be a while, but, you know, in terms of voting to pursue it.
Well, I think the consensus here is, is to move forward with, with the information and get back to us, so. I don't think we need a vote.
I'm not, not looking for a motion. This is again, it was intended to be discussion and giving my office some guidance in terms of the intent and direction the board wants to take going forward, and we'll be bringing back again particulars as it relates, ties back to the FY27 budget in the coming weeks.
I think that's good enough.
I think the particulars, but also the math behind it, because I don't know that we have, and I think to your point, that we don't have an, a good idea of the composition and ownership data. These are kind of pie in the sky right now. We know the total number of homes, but we don't actually know what percentage our owner occupied versus primary, and I don't know how we get to that. But I think that's part of the homework for check-ins before we can make it.
This is one way to find out.
Yeah. And I think, but I think it's important to find out.
I think overall, we need to have that data with respect, going forward for seasonal communities and a number of other things going forward. I think we need that data at some point.
Short-term rentals.
Mr. Chair?
And short-term rentals.
Yes. Respectfully, you know, we could hire a consultant or an economist to come up with an estimate, but that data is not available, it doesn't exist. So, we're not going to have a hard number for.
Until we do this?
Right. So, the way we, the way we actually know is after, after the select board votes to adopt a residential exemption, and then folks submit their applications, because we, we just, there isn't.
Then how, how do they determine that, you know, the, the towns on the, on the Cape reached that, that level to give them the seasonal community designation? I mean, there must be a way to make that determination.
Yeah, there is a map.
Yeah.
I'm just going to try.
But in, in any event, you know, we, we just need to get this information somehow.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if it's, you know, different, different standards, but, you know, also because people can change, right? Like, if you own two properties, in any given year, you can change which one you declare as your primary. But you, but my understanding from our conversation with Department of Revenue was that, you know, that there wasn't hard data that was available to the towns, but maybe, maybe there's some data set somewhere that.
It looks like the Cape Cod Commission did a report on it and has a town-by-town breakdown that has percents. I don't know how they got that.
Where they got it, we don't know, but there is, it is out there.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll follow up and find out where that data came from, and that's probably going to be the best data we have.
Yeah. And I guess that's just last point, my last point, I guess, is just what, this is where we reach out to other towns and say, how many people actually did opt-in? You know, Barnstable's had it for a lot longer than some of these other towns, but maybe seeing what did they actually do and what happened.
Thank you, Laura.
Anybody want to make bets on the percentage?
Thank you.
I'm going to guess.
What's the over/under? It's about 32% would be my guess.
I'm going to say 50%.
All right. That's because you have a vested interest in short-term rentals, that's why.
No, I'm talking about the percentage of resident.
Okay.
Residential house.
So, we will move on to the requirements for, the requirements and potential benefits of implementing a Water Infrastructure Improvement Fund, WHF. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Amy, oh, Amy's got the presentation loaded. Our wastewater superintendent is here tonight. This is a discussion item. As you all know, we're shooting for trying to group these by category or theme, and we feel, as other communities on Cape have, have looked at this, WIF, Water Infrastructure Investment Fund, in combination with the residential property tax exemption. So, Amy has several slides she wants to go through and kind of get us comfortable with what a WIF is, what are the benefits, and potentially a time, a timeline for implementation. Amy?
Sure. Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent. I think it's, it's good to be talking about all these things at once in, in the same evening. I heard the discussion about the operating budget earlier, not directly related, but certainly interrelated. So, what is an Water Infrastructure Investment Fund, or a WIF? It's a special revenue fund that may be appropriated for maintenance, improvements, and investments for municipal wastewater, drinking water, and stormwater infrastructure. The source of revenue for the fund is a property tax surcharge. So, this is a tax. It's a property tax surcharge of up to 3% that's assessed on each parcel, parcel of taxable real estate in the community. It's not subject to the levy limitations of Prop 2 and 1/2. Town meeting appropriation would be required to expend from the fund, so this doesn't go into the general fund. It becomes its own special fund that Town Meeting would need to appropriate from that fund in order to spend it. The WIF is, you can imagine it's similar to the Community Preservation Act Fund, which everybody's pretty familiar with. Why establish a WIF in Falmouth? To provide funding to implement wastewater management projects, to improve water quality, and improve water quality in the town's ponds. And I probably don't need to list these for you, but the things, the examples are outfall for the treated wastewater discharge, additional phases of sewer expansion to meet the total maximum daily load limits for the town's coastal ponds, future treatment system expansion for later phases of the, of the sewer expansion, and future sewer resiliency and rehabilitation projects. The town has a lot of these already on the capital plan, and there's a lot of significant, there's significant work to be done. The annual debt service costs for wastewater projects could average from $3 million to $7 million per year, from 2030 to 2050 and beyond. That is a very preliminary number. It's, it depends, that amount per year, of course, depends on what projects are voted, and on what schedule, and with what financing. The 20-year wastewater project schedule and cost will be prepared as part of the watershed management plan for all state-designated nitrogen-sensitive areas. So, there's a Town Meeting, under Town Meeting Article III, one of the two capital projects. There's funds, there are funds requested to prepare a watershed management plan, which will allow the town to put a, put a more certain number to this second part of this In the past, the town has funded wastewater projects with retiring debt, those windows of opportunity, but as has been discussed in a number of ways lately, there are increasing other demands on the town's funding resources, like the police station, fire sta, fire station, schools, et cetera, and there are very significant wastewater infrastructure needs. And the town cannot afford to implement all of these wastewater management and other CIP projects with existing revenue sources. Setting up a WIF will provide a consistent source of funding for the needed wastewater management projects and leave more funds available for other town priorities.
Can I just put a pause quickly, not for you, but for Town Management and others? Point number two is really, really important for us to understand as a board, regards to, you know, from the beginning, my first meetings here, Mr. Brown has talked about our capital improvement in the size of that list, but then we have a lot of demands that we're kind of talking about in isolation. In a future agenda, can we actually talk about the financing of these as they relate together? Because I think it's really important for us as a board to understand this, especially as we go into the operating budgets and approving, but looking really how they all add together over the next five, 10, and 20 years, I think it's going to be really important for us, because I think Ms. Lowell points it out. I mean, we're looking now at a solution, because it's so big, how many more of these other solutions are we going to have to be creative about in the future, in addition to just the core fundamentals that we have to do, a few of which are here, not including outfall, pipe, and others, right? We have some big numbers in front of us.
I still think we need a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to talk about the long-term capital plan.
Sorry to interrupt, but that was a really important point. Thank you for putting that in there.
Anything else on that? So, just a preliminary idea of how much revenue would be generated by a WIF. The WIF is, the, the percentage that is voted is taken as, it's a, that percentage is applied to the, the, the tax rate. So, the base plus the 2.5% increase plus the growth. So, you take 3%, 2%, or 1%, or whatever your percent is of that number to, to estimate your, your revenue. So, the WIF revenue at 3% in FY27 would be more than $3.8 million. At a percentage, at a 2%, it would be more than $2.5 million, and at 1%, it would be more than $1.2 million. So, just to give you an idea of the revenue at those percentage choices. What would it take to establish a WIF in Falmouth? It's pretty straightforward. Town meeting would need to vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 39m, which is the section of the law that established this option. And then, in Town Meeting would also need to approve the amount of the surcharge, up to 3%. That would then need to go to the voters. They would have to approve the adoption of the WIF and the percentage on the ballot. Other towns, several other Cape towns have WIFs, including Mashpee, which is now 2%, Sandwich, which is now 2%, and Dennis, which is now 3%. Barnstable is also seriously considering a WIF to, quote, stabilize their long-term funding for wastewater management projects. In your packet, I included these references for the Department of, Division of Local Services, guidance on the WIF process, and the general law. And that's it. Wanted to provide that for discussion.
Yes, Ms. Golds, no?
I think the, the question outstanding in, in my mind with this, which, first of all, thank you for putting all this together, and I think it is a really creative and important mechanism to consider. The, the question is my, in my mind, is we're establishing this, I mean, I guess it would be voted as part of the tax rate, or one, once Town Meeting votes this, this would be in perpetuity, for how long does the, the WIF last? And I think it would be important for us and Town Meeting and voters to be able to evaluate what this scenario would look like versus what anticipated Prop 2 and 1/2 overrides would be to fund our anticipated wastewater projects. And that's not data you had in here, so I'm not asking you to do that on the fly. I don't know if you have a sense of what that looks like, but to kind of be able to compare, like, if we're just setting a levy of 1 or 2% every year for some period versus anticipating distinct Prop 2 and 1/2 overrides for specific projects as they come.
Debt exclusions. You're talking about debt, debt exclusions versus, right? So, the WIF would last in, as long, until it was, until the town, unless and until the town voted to rescind it. So, it's, it doesn't have a defined sunset clause. And it, so a debt exclusion, a series of debt exclusions is another option. What it means is, a debt exclusion then is, you have to vote it each time for each project, which has advantages and disadvantages. One of them is that when you don't have that project on the, on the ballot that year, then you're not raising that additional revenue that year. So, this really, every year consistently sets aside that money and, and provides the town a more consistent and knowable funding resource. Yeah.
I mean, I, I see the, the appeal from the town's side, I think it's, it's in terms of making the case for residents who are going to have to vote for this, what does this look like in terms of their tax bill over the next, say, 10 years? Okay, what, what should they expect under those different scenarios?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, you know, I think it goes back to Mr. Reed's request to look at all of the capital needs comprehensively, and that's something that we have done in the past and will do again, and, you know, it comes in the form of a, a debt forecast, looking at, you know, the entire capital plan and the debt forecast. So, to your point, Ms. Golds, I think what we can do is, we can look at modeling out all of the capital needs and the extent to which they can be met without any tax increase, the extent to which they could be met with a WIF, and that will give you a frame of reference. Now, the WIF, you know, can be used for wastewater and water, and stormwater, so, you know, it would address a number of those issues, and it may get us closer to funding the capital plan. But in terms, I mean, the tax impact is, it's sort of the same, whether it's a WIF or whether it's debt exemptions, it's really about how much of the capital plan do, do we want to take on.
Well, if I could take that one step further, looking at, we're previous topic plus this one, we're talking about changing property taxes. In my naive mind, if you were to give an exemption of 3% and bump this one 3%, well, if the people are applying, well, it's a zero-sum game for many folks. I'm not sure if that's a very simplistic and too simplistic, but I think my bigger point is to look at what we're proposing in regards to someone's personal wallet will be very important, because I think that's, you know, something that we hear quite often is, you know, we have very good tax rates in town, but don't touch them or be very careful, and I think we just have to do it in full context. But the WIF overall, I couldn't agree more, it's an absolutely needed thing to have a guaranteed amount in addition. I think it's just going to help us, because again, the three of us were campaigning this last bit, a major point was water, right? And it was wastewater, and how we're going to continue to build that system. And so, if this is one of those things we have to do, then, you know, let's do it. But I think having the data, the math will be very important.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Yes, Mr. Richards?
So, how do, do you, the Plymouth Nuclear Stabilization Fund, are you familiar with that at all?
No.
So, the way theirs works, and I, I might be wrong with this, but they established a fund where they just transfer money from free cash every year, but Town Meeting is the one who actually does it, so two-thirds of Town Meeting will vote to move X amount of money per every year. So, there's no increase in property taxes that way, but it's, so what they did, they established that in 2014, because they knew that this plant would eventually go offline. The fund was $1 million, now it's up to $10 million, and they're going to look to purchase part of the land around the, the nuclear site. So, that might be one way to look at doing this?
If I may? Yeah, so we, we're doing that already. It's called the Capital and Debt Stabilization Fund.
Okay.
But it's more than just free cash, we actually put some of our recurring annual revenues into that.
So, then going off that, would that then be a separate fund for this, or would that just all, would that be?
It already is, it's already part of our capital plan, so we have a $19 million balance in our Capital and Debt Stabilization Plan, and the, and the whole concept is to smooth out, is both to prepare for large capital needs that are coming, and also smooth out some of the ups and downs of capital demands.
But not, but not water-specific?
It's unlimited, right? You can use it for any purpose.
So, got you. So, they, so they have that and the additional one, which is just for nuclear, nuclear-related thing.
So, just another earmark. So, the point, the point of the WIF is, you know, we're, in terms of stewarding existing revenues, we're in really good shape.
Right.
We don't need a new tool, in my humble opinion, to steward existing revenues.
I see.
If we want to take on more of the capital needs than we can without a tax increase, then we need to look at new revenues and tax increases.
Yeah, I, I got you. I was just seeing both, both ways to do it, but yeah, I think, thank you for this presentation. I think this is something we should move towards.
What's, what's the timeline here, Mr. Renshaw, for us?
So, Amy, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes. So, I would, I would recommend that we talk about including this on the April 2026 Town Meeting warrant, and I'd recommend a 3% number. I didn't put that in the presentation, because this is not a, this wasn't a recommendation and vote meeting, but I, based on the, the, the needs, that's, that's my recommendation.
Okay, but, but that, that's my question. When do we need to make a decision so that it can move forward in April?
It's coming in January?
It's a, it's a Town Meeting, it starts with a Town Meeting vote, and then a ballot vote. So, if you want to do it.
We need to have this in December sometime, or sooner?
Yeah, the dissent will, if the select board wants to have this acted upon by Town Meeting in April, then we need to decide in, in, you know, December.
Which is right around the corner.
Yes, it is.
I mean, I guess it's just in finding the percent we want to propose, because we'll just, I like how this is, this put up to the voters and put up to Town Meeting.
Coming back with some potential tax implication.
Yeah. I think that's what we want to see.
2%, 2%, or 3%? Okay.
For individual, for, for specific bills.
And, and all, all properties are taxed? And all properties are taxed to 3%? It's not just?
I'm sorry?
All properties are taxed at the same surcharge?
This is, yes, it applies to all properties.
Commercial as well, as residents?
Yes, this is a cross-the-board tax increase.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
I like the fact that it's a separate account, separate fund. Would it be considered like an enterprise fund, then?
No.
It's stabilization fund.
Okay.
Yeah, receipts reserved for appropriation accounts. So it can only be used for those three purposes, and it can only be used by a Town Meeting vote. But those are the, there are not other restrictions like enterprise.
Does it help you in any other ways, like for grant opportunities and so forth, like an enterprise fund can sometimes do?
I'm not aware of that, but that's a good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Is Mr. Galasso outside? Okay. All right. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, so we are going to discuss and consider a vote to approve an application to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund from Michael Galasso, Four Sandwich Road LLC, regarding project located at Four Sandwich Road. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jed, did you want to kick off, introduce Mr. Galasso, or did you just want to turn the podium over to him for the presentation?
I can introduce him, sure. For the record, Jed Cornoch, Community Development Director. As the chair mentioned, Michael Galasso is here this evening to request $1.5 million from the Affordable Housing Fund for his project at Four Sandwich Road. And so with that, I'll hand the podium off.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Michael Galasso. I'm the managing member of Four Sandwich Road LLC, which will be the developer of this project, under a long-term ground lease with Dunkin' Donuts, who have been at that property for a number of years. I think this is a great example of adding affordable housing to an already existing, underutilized lot. It was a former Eastern Bank building. It was converted to Dunkin' Donuts a number of years ago, and the excess land is where we'll be building the 10 units. Let me pull up the site plan if I can.
I think you can use the wheel.
There we go. We'll come back to the units in a second. So the site plan's been approved by the Planning Commission, also the ZBA. It shows five duplex buildings that along the vacant property, which is just to the north of the Dunkin' Donuts itself. The circulation will still be the same as when you come into the Dunkin' Donuts, and the parking would be to the right and to the left. This property is located just outside the Mr. Cod district. It would be Mr. Cod if we had sewer, which is about 500 feet, too bad Amy left, from the corner of the property. We'll have a total of 10 units. They're all two-bedroom, 1.5 baths, about 1,200 square feet. Two of them will be at 80% of AMI, two of them will be at 100% AMI, and six will be at 120% AMI. And if you were to look, and I believe the rents were in your package, the two units at 80% would be at $2,200. The units at 100% are at $2,800, and the ones at 120% are $3,420. You know, to me, that isn't really affordable housing. So that's what we've got approved. And what I do, as you know from my other projects, is that with your funding assistance, there's an application coming up in December to apply to the state for additional funding. And with that, I can leverage our money and bring down those rents. So I'd like to see more of them at, you know, 80 and 100%. All the units will be on the SHI, so we'll add 10 units to the town's SHI. A couple of modifications we make into the building. So I wasn't initially involved in the design of this project, in the planning of this project. I came upon it a little bit later, when the Dunkin' Donuts people decided that they're better off making coffee and donuts and being affordable housing developers, but they need housing for their employees. So we're going to modify it. First thing we need to do is that 50% of the units have to be visitable. Right now, they're not, so we need to make some modifications with the site plan to accomplish that. We need to simplify the roof plans. Let me go back and... So as you can see, there's a number of different roof angles, which increase cost, but also we like to do our buildings with solar. We like to make them 100% electric, and these roofs, the way that they're orientated, just really aren't great for that. So we're going to be simplifying the roof plans. We're going to be adding full basements. You know, our project in North Falmouth, McGanser Crossing, we don't have any basements, but we had garages. We found that people are not putting their cars in the garages, but they're putting a lot of storage in there. So we didn't have any basements. This project will have basements, so people have a private place to store their goods. They'll be all-electric. We're trying for net zero. We're going to add electric car charging stations, which is something that we added to our project in North Falmouth, too. The play area that's shown on the site plan, I'll go back to that in a second. The ZBA decided that since we're located right across the street from a school that has a play area, that that's not necessary no longer, so there won't be any onsite play area. And I think that's, I don't want to say it's a good thing, but we found in the play area that we did in McGanser Crossing, it's very hard to pick out the right equipment, because you really got to determine the age of the kids that are going to live there. So you can't find any equipment that really satisfies everyone, so them being able to go across the street and use the school, I think, is a great solution to that. Any changes that we make to the plans, we'll work with Jed and Kim and Town Administration, and if they feel it's necessary to come back in front of you, we have no problem with that. So we'll be working on those changes over the next few months, because when we submit to the state in December, we'll have to have those revised plans ready to go and submit to them. I think that's about it. If you have any questions for me on the project?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Richards?
Thank you. My only, thank you. My only question is, if you don't, for whatever reason, get the state money, would you move forward with them at the current rates they're at?
You know, the easy question is yes, but that's the easy question. I think you know that. I don't really go the easy route, and I think it's more important to sort of stick with it and find the funding. I think I found from working on the nursing home project that, you know, if you keep on digging, you can find the various sources. That project's going to have eight to 10 different sources, so, you know, I can put some of those sources, not from that project, but, you know, apply for them. One important thing is now that we get a lot of funding when we make the projects net zero and energy efficient, so that helps, too.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the goal would be, because I really don't want to build a project and end up having rents that are going to be competing, possibly with other market-rate projects, so I'd rather work hard and try to get the funding in order to bring the rents down.
Question for Town Council. These are going to be deed restricted in perpetuity?
Yes.
But there's a 99-year ground lease. Do they continue beyond the expiration of the ground lease?
Well, a 99-year ground lease is kind of a, like a legal fallacy. We will do everything to make sure that they are restricted in perpetuity to the best of our ability. I think that the ground lease isn't going to be an impediment to that.
Okay.
Few questions. So I appreciate you showing this and explaining, because I don't think, when I was looking at the packet, I hadn't understood. So this is, the development is entirely going, I'm looking, sorry, pointing to something that you can't see. I'm looking at the Google aerial map that was in our packet. So the development is actually entirely in what is shown there as the wooded area with the current driveway and parking on either side, and then what is happening on the remainder of the parcel?
So to the bottom of the slide, below where the parking is and everything, is where the existing building is. So the existing Dunkin' Donuts stays there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's what, yeah, to the bottom of the page.
So you've separated the two lots?
There's only one lot there.
So it'll be on the actual same property?
Beyond the same one.
It's mixed use, yeah, why would be Mr. Cod, right?
Okay. Harkening back to a conversation earlier this evening, if you're not putting play area in there, is that corner designated for anything else in the current plans?
Yes, keep the trees there. There's a lot of trees there.
I'll go for trees over saying add gardens there, so.
See, that counts, that's close enough.
We'll go for green space and trees instead of shared garden space. And then my last question is, making sure I understand the amounts of restrictions that you're proposing. So what you're proposing right now, and requesting approval for, is two will be at 80%, two at 100, and the remainder at 120?
Correct.
That puts us at 20% deed restricted as affordable by state standards, correct? So does that?
No, all of those will go on the SHI.
So it does qualify, because I thought it was 25% at 80% restriction to get that?
Originally, we only had one at 80%, and then Kim asked if we could add another one, because that was needed in order to make it on the SHI.
Right, I just wasn't sure, because I then saw a third maybe needed for certain state grant funding.
Could be.
Okay.
Yes, and that's within your report, too. It could be.
And then you were saying, with this funding from us, ideally, you would like to increase the number. Do you have a sense, with this funding from the town, if you're able to get the other funding that you're looking for, where you would eventually land in terms of the distribution of restrictions?
Well, a couple of things. Well, we would never go any higher than what's being proposed right now. And what we would be doing is going lower, so the six at 120, I would try to get anything lower than that. One possibility is to get some project-based Section A certificates from the Falmouth Housing Authority. That would allow us to have some units actually at 50%. So.
Okay. I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, what we're aiming for, understanding that what we've got in here is a minimum, that it would be two, two, and six.
Right.
But I'm trying to get a sense of what you're aiming for in terms of end goal. If you got all the funding you wanted, what would we potentially be ending up with?
To have probably, like, four at 80, and maybe eight at 100, and possibly a couple at 50%. That would be the mix. So this is sort of, this is sort of the worst-case scenario.
How much would you need for that?
From you?
No, from the state.
Probably, probably, probably about $2 million.
Okay. Well, walking the donkeys has to be a perk, right?
You know, when we say from the state, they have different plots.
Right, but in total, you'd need $2 million to bring those down to that mix.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would just say to the, to my colleagues on the board, that if we're going to make this investment upfront, then anything else we can do to help you secure that funding, to bring those numbers to more of the lower price units, I would hope that we would do any and all of the letters of support and anything else to make sure the project is.
Those are very helpful, the letters of support. I'm sure I'll be back to ask for a couple of those as we start our application cycle.
Okay, any more questions? I mean, there is a very detailed recommended motion, but a question I have for, well, Town Council, should the motion refer to the conditions that are part of what the agreement had been? Do we need to recite those conditions as well? They were in Mr. Renshaw's memo?
I have a question about it, the language also.
I'm just wondering if the motion should include the conditions?
It can, you can just say as, including proposed conditions in the town manager's memo.
So it needs to be in there somewhere, I think. Okay. Mr. Brown?
And the language says to be, recommended motion included in the motion, it says to be awarded as a loan secured by a mortgage. Is it a loan or a grant?
I think it's a loan.
Is it a loan that becomes a grant, or is it a loan that's paid back?
Well, what's before you is a loan, so that, my understanding, when you're asked to vote on a loan, that it's been negotiated as a loan and not a grant. And I also understand that projects like these now are structured as loans, not grants.
We did that with the nursing home, and that's the way we're going to do them in the future.
And if I could just clarify, so.
And once it's completed, right?
Well, so for rental, it's different for homeownership and rental, right? So for, the purpose of the mortgage is to secure the ongoing purpose of the subsidy. So there is no repayment of the loan so long as the units are constructed and managed as affordable units. So it's.
It's a forgivable loan.
It's a forgivable, technically, it's a forgivable loan. The idea is, again, it's, you know, in some sense, it's a grant that's secured with a mortgage or a loan in case the developer defaults on the purpose and the terms of the subsidy.
Okay. And in future cases similar to this, I'm not suggesting we change this, but can we add language that if the developer fails to perform, i.e. getting building permits in a timely fashion before zoning approvals expire, can we then have leverage?
It's in here.
Two-year period.
Two-year.
We have a two-year period. That's one of the conditions that we were referring to, that's all.
Two years doesn't necessarily cover what I'm thinking of, but.
There are several.
There's an option to extend at the discretion of the Select Board, so I think that covers what you're concerned about.
Okay.
There are various terms of default that are all tied to making the units affordable and making the project go forward. And so that's really the difference between the loan and the grant. Under a grant, there's no default provisions. It's just, here's the money, go build the project. With the loan, there are, there are entire sections devoted to what happens if the project isn't completed the way that we've demanded it be completed, and that would trigger a repayment.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the two years allows us to apply twice to the state, because they have annual cycles and everything, so the two years gives us an opportunity to go in twice for funding from the state.
Okay, thanks.
I'd just like to commend you for the design element, given all the facts that we've seen around town, and some that are not so well-designed. You've done a lot, wearing my co-chair of the EDIC hat. We're working really hard for a small piece of property like this, so I commend you on that design aspect and including that in the pricing here.
It's coming back, though. They're not going to look the same.
It's coming, it's coming back. It will look better.
Where you're headed is much better than what we've seen in other projects. So with that, I think we are prepared to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, if we could, real quickly, again, I applaud Mr. Galasso for putting this together, but I would like to clarify a point with regards to all of these units being placed on the SHI. Jed, could you kind of, I just want to make sure the board is clear before the motion's made?
Yeah, so for the record, Jed Cornoch, Community Development Director. All of the units will not actually be eligible for the SHI, simply because this wasn't a 40B project. This was a special permit for multi-family use through the zoning board of appeals. So the only units that will be eligible for the SHI are those that they allow to be. My understanding is that that's 100% of the AMI, as well as the 80% AMIs. So the 120s would not be eligible to be included. As you would normally get in a 40B rental development, all of them would be eligible. But the good news is, they're all deed restricted, and they're all affordable. So that's the, Eric Holt's win here.
If we reduce the number of 120s, will those become eligible?
If they go to 100.
Right.
If you get the mix that you want.
Exactly.
Then they would all be on the SHI.
That's right.
Thank you for the clarification.
I think that's something the state should consider.
The ever-elusive list.
Yeah, whatever that means. Okay, who's going to go?
Chair? I move to the Select Board as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, award $1,500,000 to be awarded as a loan secured by a mortgage, subordination of lease, and other documents on Four Sandrich Road, as outlined in the town manager's documentation.
Subject to conditions.
And subject to the conditions discussed herein.
And subject to the conditions discussed herein.
And you got to continue now.
You got to read the thing.
For the construction of.
Oh, I have to do that?
Yeah, you got to keep going.
Geez, I thought I was missing the rest.
You raise your hand, you got to keep going.
For the construction of ten deed-restricted units at Four Sandwich Road, of which two.
At least, well, do we need at least language in there?
Of which at least two will be deed restricted at eighty percent of the area median income. Two will be deed restricted at a hundred percent of the median income. And six will be deed restricted at a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income.
Or less.
Or less. And authorize the town manager to execute the documentation, setting forth the terms of the financial award for construction at Four Sandwich Road. The awards will be made to Four Sandwich Road LLC as developer and will require such loan documents as town council may advise. Loan documents will be required from the developer, the owner of Four Sandwich Road, and any ground lessers.
One more at least, at least two for the a hundred percent. You had at least for the eighty, but not for the hundred.
I'm not, if I may, I think it might be cleaner without any of the at least.
I don't think you have to say at least. It says will be two and two.
Yeah, I think, and Jed, you can perhaps confirm or correct me. I think the notion here was we're going to set it at these particular counts for A M I. And if Mr. Glasso needs to change it, he comes back for another vote.
But he can't, if he goes to the state and they give him more money and he has the opportunity to go to one hundred.
Then he'll come back to us and we'll amend the award.
Okay.
Because, you know, this funding, we, you know, it's a big deal. What the A M I is, the breakdown is of all of the units. And the way we've been doing it to this point is we nail it down and it's connected to the agreement for the funding. If something's changed, we can always consider a change. This board can consider making a change. But it's not something that can just be sort of roughly set and then the developer changes it after the fact. We want to, we want to control it.
All right.
As amended?
As.
As amended?
Well, as written, actually.
As written.
As written.
Without the at least.
Okay, is there a motion?
Do I have to say it all again?
Yeah, do it over.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, Mr. Glasso. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item I, presentation and discussion on the ClearPoint Strategy Strategic Plan and Capital Project Status Tracking Platform. Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just discussion only. So two and a half years ago approximately, when I came to the town to become your town manager, met with Peter and we kind of discussed a, what I'll call a disconnect or lack of connection between the departments and the select board's strategic plan. There's a copy of the plan in your packets along with a rough draft of where we're at now with the launch of this ClearPoint Strategy Platform. So that was the need. A couple of years ago, there was not a real strong connection between what the departments were doing on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, year-to-year basis and the plan. Once Peter and I identified that as an issue, we started sitting down with the department heads and the division heads and we started going over the creation of metrics. How, okay, here's the plan. Were you aware of it? Some were, some weren't. Now let's take a look at developing some metrics, things that you do as a kind of a core function at the department or division level and tie those directly back to one or more of the seven key focus areas in the plan. It's great to have that mechanism and have that work underway. And this all started again back in 2023, late 2023. What we needed, the next step to make this an actual initiative was to have a way to manage and track that information. So in November 2023, town meeting, we requested an appropriation for funds. I think it was twenty-five thousand dollars in appropriation, which was approved. Peter and I set our sights on interviewing and talking and discussing with a variety of different software platform vendors. We ultimately landed on ClearPoint Strategy at a cost of about thirteen thousand per year. We're currently wrapping up a long, arduous eighteen-month process. It was a lift, and I'll just say it tonight, it was more of a lift than I anticipated it being. And the work is still ongoing. The product that you have is a report. One of the features that Peter and I both liked about ClearPoint Strategy, it's very robust. It has a lot of bells and whistles that are useful as a management tool. The sample report that you have in your packet is a little rough around the edges. We're polishing that, so we're not complete with the implementation. A lot of the departments and divisions are still underway and working on, again, developing those key performance indicators that track back and tie back directly to one or more of the key focus areas in the plan. The work the select board is doing in September, we're going to follow that up with our second session, the Strategic Plan Workshop, with the consultant is going to be vital to making this system work a lot better. But my message tonight, I wanted to give this, I've been talking about giving this update for a couple of months now, and I felt like we were far enough along. The goal, the vision, the departments are currently entering their information on a quarterly basis. Other places I've managed at the department level and as a city manager, City of Atlanta is a great example. How they use this process, there were twenty-seven council members, I think, and I remember as a department head in Atlanta, going before the entire city council as the code enforcement director and explaining, kind of going through my metrics and explaining why we're kind of, you know, where we're at. We set a target. Are we operating above expectations of performance goals or are we below? And we used it as a useful management tool to allocate resources. There's some information in your report in terms of, you know, some of the benefits of a program like this. Enhance visibility and accountability, that was lacking, right? We have people that are doing great work and we have these great goals and objectives within the plan, but there's really no connection or accountability. Now we have that because there's project owners that are listed in the platform. Continuous improvement and innovation, setting performance targets. We push ourselves, right, through the setting of targets and goals through these K P I's. So we continuously try to improve. Data-driven decision-making, we've all talked about the importance of that, in particular going forward with scarce resources, making sure that our data, our decisions are based on data. And again, as I mentioned, using this tool ultimately in quarterly presentations to the select board, where the department heads, myself, present where we're at. And if it's a matter, if we're falling short of our goals, our performance targets, and it's a matter of additional resources that are needed, having a tool like this, a management tool, allows us to better allocate those limited resources. If it's a priority of the select board, then we need to kind of shift and align our resource allocation and whether it's staffing or something else to better meet those goals of the select board. So in essence, that's what this type of program initiative does, performance measurement. There's a great quote in here that I love to give every time I talk about this. Peter Drucker was a twentieth-century business consultant, did a lot of great work working with corporations. The actual quote he used was what gets measured, what gets measured gets managed. Some people have interpreted it as what gets measured gets done. If you're not measuring your performance and comparing it to a standard or a target, you're not making that continuous progress and you're not getting things done, in effect. So again, I'm excited about the project. The report that you have was just meant to be an illustration. We're still kind of fine-tuning it. There's some missing pieces, so it's a little clunky right now. I just had a conversation with the vendor, ClearPoint Strategy. The big, in addition to the quarterly presentations to the select board that I'm hoping to start next calendar year, having a public-facing dashboard is also important. There's an example, maybe not the best example, but it was one I could find quickly of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, that uses this public-facing dashboard. So it allows the community to access this information and find out a variety of measures that we select to kind of front face and kind of show the community what we're doing, how we're doing it. That phase two, right now, we're doing the kind of the internal backend build of the system. That public-facing dashboard is phase two and we're looking to do that in January, February, after we clear some of the town meeting and things slow down, if there is such a thing, in the town of Falmouth, again, in the first of the year. So we're looking to kind of build on what we have. I think it's a great start. It certainly is going to allow us, once it is completely built out, to better track and manage and be more accountable to the select board as a governing body and ultimately to the community that we all work for.
It seems, it's going to be great, but it seems like it's still going to be an ongoing challenge to keep uploading the data to it.
It is. It's a commitment. Each department, division has someone assigned, a user in the system, author. There's a term that ClearPoint Strategy uses. So each department has that representative, that it's their responsibility to be the data entry representative for their department.
I guess the amount of hours available will determine the level of detail that's available and to be viewed.
Well, so, and again, this was my effort and it's probably not my best effort to come up. There's a lot of different boxes to check in terms of the information that you want shown in these reports. And I'm still learning that system myself, quite honestly, working with the consultant. So there is a lot more detail probably in some of these pages that doesn't necessarily need to be there. A lot of it allows you to drill down. I've made copies as a PDF of those kind of different layers. There's a splash, a landing page for the town of Falmouth as an organization. And then each department has its own landing page that talks about, again, you know, its mission, vision statement. So it is a commitment. It's a lot of time that goes into putting the information in. I think the departments and the divisions are finally starting to kind of work out through a system. There's been a lot of bumps down along the way in terms of making sure that we're all doing it the same way. Because if one department's doing it differently, that becomes an issue. So we're still kind of learning as we go along. This is, again, was meant to be a short presentation of kind of where we're at now. And I think it's going to be an excellent tool going forward for not only the select board, but the management team as well.
When do you think it would be available to be that public-facing document?
Yeah, so by spring, because if we look to, yeah, well, no, because that's going to kick off the implementation of that public-facing dashboard, and I think it's a four- to six-week process. The lift for the public-facing dashboard, I'm being told, is a lot more on the vendor's side than staff, whereas this eighteen months was a lot of staff input and involvement. This is going to be more turning it over to the consultant once we agree on kind of the look and feel. You all saw the Fort Lauderdale example. It's all fully customizable as far as the appearance of that public-facing dashboard.
Two questions. One, town meeting approved twenty-five grand for the acquisition, and then it was noted further down as thirteen grand per year. So we've clearly used those two years, but do we have that budgeted going forward?
It is. It's in the budget for that renewal, yes.
And then I think it's phenomenal, having K P I's, having those things. Looking at the Fort Lauderdale example, they had, I think, goals that we've done with our strategic plan, but they had very pointed things like crime rate, fire rescue times, things that were not yet at our strategic plan. So based on all that you've learned, assessing the data, knowing, you know, taking your previous experience in this one, what do we need to do with you as a select board for our five-year strategic plan to get you to these types of measures and descriptions?
Yeah, so that's a great question. And we've already started back in September with the first session, working with the consultant. And that is better defining, consolidating those goals within the seven key focus areas. So that's going to be a great help right now. And that's probably one of the significant issues or challenges that we had over the past couple of years, working with, not being sure, quite honestly, when you look at some of the goals right now that are built into the plan, which ones were priorities. So sifting through that, consolidating that, making it more concise, I should say, and identifying the true goals. And then letting the people that do the day-to-day mission, right, let them, now that we know that these are the true goals in the focus areas, let the folks that do the job on a day-in, day-out basis come up with those metrics because they're familiar with how they kind of track the data and what data is readily accessible, the smart measures.
Thanks. Did you?
Well, thanks.
I like it.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on to discuss the town of Brewster's preschool family support program. This was an item I asked Mr. Renshaw to put on the agenda. The former chair, Taylor, and I both felt this was something to take a look at. There's information in your packet. I don't know if you want to say anything to it, Mr. Renshaw first?
So there's a lot of great information that I literally took from the town of Brewster's website. They just created this program. I suggest it was last year. And you can see kind of some of the details with regards to how they funded it initially and how they've grown the program over just a short period of time. It involves a subsidy of a three-thousand-dollar payment for very specific age groups to help offset, which we all know, the increasing costs of childcare, daycare in our community. This has a lot of implications, right? I mean, affordability, economic implications, economic development implications. Attracting a trained workforce means you have to provide, in my opinion, those amenities and programs that can help support and actually cause the economic conditions to thrive. So I think it's a program that's worthy of exploring, but again, there's a cost. And you can see how a town a bit smaller than Falmouth started the program small and then grew it over just a year.
I mean, the one thing that struck me was that there are no income or financial eligibility requirements. It's just you apply and you get it. I mean, I would think that if we wanted to pursue it, that we would be looking for some kind, and I don't know if there's a problem with doing that, and that's why Brewster didn't put something in, but it would seem to me we would want to, you know, restrict it to A M I or some kind of financial.
Yeah, and I'm not proposing, this was a model.
No, I'm just saying, of the plan, that's just the thing that struck me. And I would think if we wanted to pursue it, we'd look to some kind of a financial eligibility standard. Yeah.
I think for all the right reasons, because it plays out in housing. It helps with recruitment and retention. But a question is, what are, what problem are we trying to solve? Do we have a documented lack of childcare in town with a child reproduction rate much lower than years past? And this is just a nice-to-have? Or I guess where did this come from in regards to like data analysis and need to fill?
Honestly, I don't think it's a data thing. Everybody knows how much daycare costs. And it's just a way to try and, you know, use some tax dollars to offset the cost.
And I bet you that need is still there despite the fact of birth rate.
And some of us may be worrying about daycare in the future, Mr. Reed.
I don't know.
I noticed that there is a demographic information page and it says approximate household annual income. So maybe there is some requirement that we're unaware of?
It did say in the outline I read that there were no financial requirements. Okay.
I think an important piece of any conversation about this is to be talking with our school system, knowing that Superintendent Dura and the school committee have been having a lot of conversations as part of navigating the future, that one of the goals there is to introduce more early childhood education. And obviously, daycare, if we're talking about starting from infant daycare, is another beast. And I don't think that's what the school district is talking about implementing. But in terms of overall cost and availability of at least pre-K, preschool-level daycare understanding, and they do have a lot of data on what is available and where there is need. And their data does indicate that there's additional need beyond what is currently being provided by private suppliers. But I think just having that whole picture and making sure that we're really in close conversation with the school district would be really important.
Mr. Renshaw has already started that dialogue.
I did. Laurie and I, a year ago, Laurie had indicated some of the programs that they were looking at. And it's my understanding, I talked recently with Laurie, because I wanted, before I had this discussion, I wanted to make sure we didn't cross up anything. So as I understand it, the school committee hasn't yet taken any kind of formal action, but they're looking at a non-fee-based program. The way I see this family support model, the Brewster model, working would be for those folks who opt for the kind of the private daycare. You know, the school's not proposing any fees associated with their programs, I understand. And Laurie didn't see this because I wanted to make sure that we're not, again, having competing programs. Laurie didn't see that this would compete directly with what they're currently in discussions with.
It's a different age group.
It is, yeah.
And if we went with, say, the $250,000 with the initial appropriation, where would that come from?
Yes. So I've knew it on the...
Is the question.
So this is...
Okay, so we're just preliminary discussion.
It is. Just, yes. I was asked to have this on the agenda for discussion. And as the chair said, it goes back over a year ago. The previous chair had the same kind of questions about the program. So, yeah, this is just a preliminary.
Gotcha.
Discussion.
Something on our radar, that's all.
It's a cool idea.
Yeah.
It's a nice idea, but, yeah.
It has a cost, but it also has a benefit for retention and affordability. So, okay. Now, last but not least, an update on the police station site location process, Mr. Renshaw.
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we're running late, so I'll try to keep this on point. So as you all know, we've had a couple of community meetings to this point. The Police Facility Advisory Committee, or Police Station, that's it, Police Station Advisory Committee, the PSAC, has been working since February of this year. I'm not going to go through all the different iterations and sites that they've looked at. But as you all recall, they recommended, they voted to recommend 44 Brick Hill, based upon all of the feedback that would be heard in the two community sessions, the most recent one last, was it Wednesday, last week, Tuesday? The overwhelming message that we're hearing from the select board members, as well as members of the community, is that there's a significant concern, and that's probably an understatement, with regards to placing the facility within the watershed protection overlay district, within the Long Pond Water Service area. So with that, my ask of the PSAC was to, and this is a recent ask, within the past week and a half, they actually started really digging in, identify some additional options to make recommendations to the select board. I've listed a couple over here. They're actually looking at potentially another site. But the two that they're currently looking at, and Peter can help me out with this as well, because he's been working even more closely with the PSAC. There's a 12.3-acre site, five acres of which are developable adjacent near the Hatchville Fire Station at 888 Sandrich Road. We've recently, working with town council, come to understand that there's some pretty significant Article 97 restrictions with regards to that site. So, but that's still being discussed and vetted. The other site that we're currently looking at, and this was, as I understand it, perhaps part of that initial review, you saw it recently in one of the slide decks, was the Augusta property, 100 Brick Hill Road. As indicated in your packet, that site had previously been examined by the team, was not recommended due to concerns identified in regards to potential deed restrictions. Again, town council's been a fabulous partner throughout this process, and most recently, putting a legal lens and looking a little bit more closely at that Augusta property at 100 Brick Hill. And although we're still vetting, we feel like there may be a pathway forward with regards to the Augusta property in terms of a potential site. The police department have gone out and taken a look at it. Anyway, the PSAC is meeting again tomorrow and again on Friday of this week, because ultimately what I'd like to do, again, is bring recommendations to the select board. And I want to make this announcement on Thursday, November 13th, so next Thursday, we will have a called meeting at 5:00 PM. It's going to be held over at the Senior Center. We confirmed with Jill Bishop that that's available, because I anticipate a lot of participation in that, and that's a good thing. But we're going to be presenting two or three additional options, site options, in addition to, I should say, the Brick Hill and 44 Brick Hill. So, did I miss anything? I don't think I did. Yeah, the big news that I wanted to get out to the community tonight is that we do have this called meeting. And it's going to be, my hope and my intent, well, my hope, is that we can provide enough information with regards to these additional sites, and kind of rank order these optional sites, so that select board can feel comfortable making a decision based on that recommendation, those recommendations, so that going into town meeting, we have a site identified. That's my hope and my goal. And working with the PSAC, I'm pretty confident that we can give you all of the information by next Thursday. But it's been a huge lift. And again, I want to thank town council for her involvement, the Director of Community Development, Jed Cornak, for his contributions, and obviously, all the PSAC members.
Sounds good.
Yes?
I just want to commend you. The amount of work that you and your staff have had to put in to do this turnaround, and really listening to the community, I really, really appreciate, and I know this town really appreciates your leadership on this one, and recognizing, you know, what the community wants, and still getting that turnaround to get it on the town meeting warrant. So I really thank you for...
Well, thanks. But again, I said "team" several times, and it truly has been a team effort.
And to the PSAC as well, the tremendous amount of work and hours they put in is phenomenal.
Would you be anticipating a vote on the November 13th or the November 17th meeting we have before town meeting?
So that's a great question. It's my hope. And again, we'll have a better idea going, following these next two meetings with the PSAC team. It's my goal going into the November 13th is that I'd be asking for a vote. But again, if select board, if our information that we present addresses concerns and issues, and you don't have any questions following that presentation, yeah, my ask would be for a vote. We could take it into the 17th, the meeting before town meeting, if you will. But I think, you know, we're going to learn a lot with the community input when we produce, when we present these additional sites on the 13th, with that called meeting. So hopefully, all of that information, plus the community input with regards to these additional new recommendations, would be enough to get that vote.
Any other questions?
I would say I echo what Mr. Richardson said. You're threading a very fine needle, and you're doing a really good job with the team. I would say if there are other concerns identified that you kind of outlined, Article 97, land purchase, things that prevented other properties to be considered, I think, you know, based on what I've seen and heard here, that, you know, the town is willing, and therefore, we are willing to, I wouldn't say negotiate, but like, allow to look at some of those things that we didn't previously look at. But the parcels you identified, I think, are good ones.
More to come. This is just a cursory kind of snapshot of what we're looking at right now and the work that's being done. But, yeah, more to come on the 13th.
I don't, I guess I can't speak on behalf of my fellow members, but I would encourage you that if something came up and there was a consideration, feel free to, you know, come to the chair or whoever.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Renshaw.
Thank you.
So do you have a supplemental report on top of that?
I do. I do have a couple of things real quickly. So the first I want to report, so back in June, the YMC, Cape Cod YMCA representatives contacted my office and requested that the town be the responsible entity for review of their environmental reports, that they had a consultant prepare. I'm going to give you the reader's digest of this. So between June and recently, the YMCA's consultant, Environmental Engineer Consultant, had been preparing that environmental assessment report, or environmental review report, not an EAS. The role of the town, again, is to act as the responsible entity, and in conjunction with the YMCA's environmental consultant, come up with, if possible, a finding of no significant impact on the site in terms of, well, a large list of criteria. And also to ultimately release through the HUD, Community Development and Planning Office, the funds for the $45.7 million project. All of this hinges on the responsible entity, the Town of Falmouth, being able to certify and declare that there was a finding of no significant impact on the site. Again, their engineer has determined that. I've had our staff review. The process that we're undergoing right now is a public notice period. We published a notice in the paper last Friday, October 31st. It has to run, according to the HUD Community Development and Planning Office, for 15 days for public comment. They can come in and review that environmental review report in all of its 375 pages, and provide comments. And based upon that comment, my role as the certifying official of the responsible entity is to ultimately sign off on that declaration that there was a finding of no significant impact, so that they can get the funds released, the federal funding that's tied to the program. So I wanted to give the select board and the community an update on that. November 18th is that cutoff for public comment. And once we've received that, assuming there is no information in there to cause any changes, I would sign off on that declaration and certification. The other update I wanted to give is HR-related. I talked about the fire chief recruitment. Happy to announce that Peter and I solicited proposals, quotes, I should say, from qualified consultants that do this work on a regular basis. We ultimately selected Public Safety Consultants LLC, which is the same firm that we used a couple, two and a half years ago to hire the police chief, which was a successful recruitment, as you all know. We've started working with Public Safety Consultants LLC to review the job description and get the recruitment advertisement posted. That posted on October 27th, and as of this morning, we've had six really qualified applications submitted, and it closes on the 17th. So on town meeting, Monday, it closes. So we're hopeful. We've, as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, cast a broad net. We're looking at the New England area, going down as far south as Connecticut, and as far north as New Hampshire. I don't think we're looking necessarily in the main area. We're trying to find folks that have coastal experience, working in a coastal community. We think that's important, one of the important criteria. And the HR director would be upset with me if I didn't also mention, in addition to that important recruitment, we currently have several other recruitments that are underway. And I probably misplaced my list. The, our deputy building commissioner is one of those recruitments that is currently underway. We have an assistant assessing director, is Assistant Director of Assessing, that's currently being recruited as well. So the more information we can get out to the public in terms of these opportunities, go to our website and visit the HR page, because all of the job postings are on our human resources page. And that's the only updates that I have, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to know at some point how the RFP for the golf course is going, a report on that, and how it's going, you know, who's on the scoring team, and...
Sure. So the...
I know, I realize it's not on the agenda, that's why I said maybe...
So we do plan to bring that to the select board for a vote on December 3rd.
Okay.
For the lease. Yeah.
So with regard to the YMCA, I think it would be wise in the future to offer them the sewer connection when we have the capacity, given their location. Would any mention of that intent, if we decide that that's what we intend later, when we have either the outfall or some other discharge capacity, would that be a helpful thing to mention in that report?
No, so not in this environmental review report, no.
Just about the environment, actually.
Impacts, potential impact on the environment is kind of the focus. And as you all know, that project is currently moving forward. It has been approved with the septic system. You know, what discussions we have going down the road, I'm not sure. It's, yeah, so right now, that's not related to this project.
Okay.
Or this phase, getting the funding released. They're working me hard to get this determination letter signed off, so that they can go ahead and request release of the funds.
Okay. I don't want to complicate it or slow it down. I just thought, if it would be helpful.
Okay. Anybody have a report? I do not.
One brief one. I was able, last week, to get a tour of the two homes that, belonging to each other, operates over the winter, one of them being the newly acquired Zammer House on Palmer Ave. Both really terrific facilities, and they've had a very high success rate in taking their seasonal residents, who are otherwise unhoused individuals, and actually helping them secure long-term housing coming out of that seasonal winter housing as well, which is terrific. You know, as we've had these conversations about the affordability of Falmouth, important to recognize that we do have a homeless population, both in, you know, BTO is also involved with the emergency shelter program. And unfortunately, right now, there's a lot of concern about increased need this winter, as we're seeing disruptions in things like SNAP and federal benefits and uncertainty. So just glad that we have fabulous nonprofits in town who are doing this work. And it was really great to be able to actually see the facilities that they're operating.
The only thing I'll add, I toured Falmouth Recovery Center with Rep. Mokley the other week, and they, it was a full house. We went around 10:30 in the morning. You know, a super busy time, but there was a full house. You know, they're coming up on their second anniversary. They've been in there since the 1st of December, 2003. And the way it's really grown into, you know, what they've done there for the community, and just a space where people can go in, it's really cool to see. So, and they're not dealing, you know, with any funding issues right now, which was a good surprise to hear. So I'm glad, shout out them and all the work they're doing over there.
I had a... I got an interesting meeting with the groups from Wood's Hall. Mark Edmondson, from the SSA, the chief engineer, was kind enough to offer to bring a presentation on the new ships that they bought. And, you know, there's been a lot of talk in Wood's Hall neighborhood about the smoke stacks and the, you know, polluting diesel and whatnot. And they've been researching a product called RD99 Fuel, which is completely made from vegetable oil. And it's not a biodiesel. It's just a new product, and the particulates are really reduced. The smoke is reduced. It still produces CO2, apparently, but less. And that's a temporary measure that they're going to plan to use. They used it all summer, and you just pour it right in, just like the diesel fuel, and the ship runs great on it, nice and clean, no problems. It's a little more expensive. And they did a test run from June 1st to September 1st, and they're very happy with the results. Now they're going to plan to do another series of runs and document the product. But they may use this for the next coming years, and in the interim time before they can convert the vessels to be, you know, not fully electric, but hybrid with the electric. So it'll be, when they come into port, they'll be on electric battery power, so they won't be idling in port. And he showed how the ships were really set up in a very good way to be able to be modified later. And he brought all kinds of engineering diagrams and stuff. I have some photos, if you want. I can share them with your board members. But it was interesting, and it was a good, and the neighbors really appreciated him coming out and explaining to them what they're working on. And it was a good little meeting, you know, different from the usual, you know, angst and anxiety. So that was nice.
I didn't hear from everybody, but there are precinct meetings going on. I don't know if you're going to make an effort to try and attend some. I think some people have said which ones they'll be able to go to, but I think they start Thursday, right?
Thursday, precinct eight and nine.
Does everybody have the schedule of those? I'll send it out.
I haven't scheduled any. I'm going to do five, and then we'll see if we get a little more of a circulation of ideas of who's going to what.
I was going to go, I wasn't going to go to eight or nine, but it's my district. I'm going to probably go, because I, as well.
Okay.
You go, that's fine. I thought I had something going on, and I don't.
I might have to be at the State House, but if I don't, I'm not going to be there.
Do we have concerns if three or more of us show up?
No, we just don't start a debate. You're there to answer questions.
Okay.
But what meetings are folks planning to cover? I've got five.
My schedule, I'm...
We can do this offline, I feel.
Let's, take a look and text everybody next day or so.
The first one is Wednesday.
Oh, there's one.
Is that one and two?
That's precinct three.
Is anyone planning to cover that? Because I can do that.
Let's see. Wednesday's my basketball day.
It's my old stomping grounds, so I don't mind. Waterways Committee.
I cannot make Wednesday.
What time is it on Wednesday?
Usually seven, but I didn't check.
I was going to say...
Wednesday's at seven.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be away on Wednesday. I'm still not sure, so...
Thursday's at six.
That I can do.
I'm going to watch the ZBA at six on Thursday, so I'll skip that one. But I can do the precinct three and skip the waterways committee this.
I'll be at one and two on Thursday at 7:00 PM.
Well, it sounds like we don't have, I can do Wednesday, because it sounds like we don't have anybody else.
You want to do that, and I can still go to the waterways?
And eight and nine is Thursday?
I can do that, Bob.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I've got, okay. It's at the Cape Club this year, right? It's not at the Navigator.
Switching it up. Switching it up.
Okay.
The fairgrounds last year.
Yeah, last year.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on one second. Future agenda items can, based on the conversation from earlier and Mr. Brown's suggestion, and Mr. Johnson Stobbs, can we do, can we put a debt forecast joint meeting with the Finance and Select Board on the agenda at some point?
Sure, we'll take a look at it.
And if it doesn't have to be a joint meeting, I just figured a joint meeting might be good.
It would probably be good. I'd like to discuss whether or not there's any possibility of discussing the 40B legislation with our local legislators and see if there could be some improvements made to the way it's impacting towns.
I can get started on that.
All right. Now we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.